Today is the tenth, 2023, and this is the work session and regular meeting of the Albemarle Planning Commission. Sorry, I can't speak. Always say where we are and what day it is so you can make sure you're in the right place. And if you're not, it's totally fine if you slip out, but wanted to make sure you knew you were in the right spot tonight. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. So with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and establish a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll?
Yes, Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
I see Ms. Firehawk is not there, and Mr. Moore is joining via Zoom. Mr. Moore, if you can unmute and we can get started. Okay, thank you.
I'm here. Thank you. I think, uh, do I need to be accepted after the quorum's reached?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Sorry. I would say if you could share your general reason for not being here in person, just in general.
Sure. Uh, illness, COVID diagnosis.
Right. Sorry to hear that. Is there a?
Oh, sorry.
And if we could also clarify his, his general location as well for the record.
Sure. I'm at my home in Albemarle County.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion to admit Commissioner Moore remotely to participate in this meeting? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Did, did Mr. Missile move and Mr. Murray second?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, that's one to make sure. Um, Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Bivens.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We can't wait to see you here in person one day.
I appreciate you.
All right. All right. On to the next item on the agenda, is other matters not listed on the agenda from the public? And just as a gentle reminder during the work session, we won't take public comment during that period. So if you want to speak on the item in our work session, this will be the time to do so. Uh, I do have a list here of several citizens here to like to speak, and I'll start with the first two. I have Rob McGinnis and Carol Carter. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Rob McGinnis. I'm here representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. I want to first recognize the important contributions made during the Planning Commission's previous work session on the four AC44 toolkits. PEC greatly appreciates the very constructive discussions which led to recommendations for improving those toolkits. However, PC has strong concerns regarding any type of map um that depicts areas of future expansion of the development areas. Such a map will be problematic, particularly regarding the acceleration of land speculation and the likely impacts associated with land speculation. There is a real danger that the mapping could spur premature expansion by drawing attention away from directing growth into the development areas. Uh, during the AC44 presentation by county staff during the most recent County Natural Heritage Committee, staff reported that the AC44 team will be exploring the possibility of including a real rural area chapter and a development areas chapter. This is welcome news, given the past two comprehensive plans included prioritized rural area chapters and the residents of the county by a significant majority consistently place a very high value on the rural areas as documented in nearly three decades of community surveys, survey results, as well as recent feedback from the public on the AC44 Comprehensive Plan process. The county should follow through with reinstating the rural area and development area chapters in the AC44 Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comments.
Thank you. Carol Carter.
Hi, my name is Carol Carter and I live at eight five two Redlands Farm. I'd like to urge the planners to honor and emphasize protection of the rural character of the county by putting the rural plan chapter back in the comprehensive plan. For years, survey after survey have demonstrated the value and importance to residents of rural protections. Agriculture, forestry, and agritourism are thriving in the county. And while our scenic beauty is appreciated by residents and visitors alike, the protections of healthy ecosystems, biodiversity, and sustainable land management are critical to the future of our water quality, our human health, and climate mitigation. Preservation and conservation of our natural and working landscapes should be prioritized for our well-being and because they are what makes life in and visitation to the county desirable. The Climate Action Plan, Stream Health Initiative, Biodiversity Action Plan, and Water Supply Plan are essential to the protection of the rural area. Please prioritize integration of parks and open space within private development and redevelopment in the development area. Please expand incentives for conservation easements in the county. Please consider the many cyclists who commute and bike for recreation in the county in your transportation planning as well as wildlife corridors to reduce collisions. Please protect our forests, farm, and grazing lands. It takes over 100 years to build a mere inch of topsoil and sacrificing prime Virginia soils to large solar development is short sighted, particularly when they are in scenic view sheds. Please protect our threatened dark skies with a strong and enforceable light ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Olivier and Genevieve Keller.
Good evening. I'm Tom Olivier from the Samuel Miller District. I've come to comment on the update of the Comprehensive Plan. Natural resources sustain us physically. We require air to breathe and water to drink. Agriculture, which feeds us in turn, depends on pollinating insects. Ecosystems sequester carbon dioxide, and many of us feel a mix of peace and joy in beholding the ecosystems that grace our open space landscapes. However, since the beginning of the industrial age, human numbers and per capita consumption of natural resources have risen. Today, the planet's natural systems have been reduced and damaged by expanding human activities. Are today's reduced natural systems sufficient to sustainably provide the services and products humanity now requires? Ecological footprint methodology is an established means of measuring human demands for biological productions of the planet's ecological, agricultural, and forestal systems. Material products and waste absorption capacities are considered in the footprint. In a recent paper, developments of the ecological footprint methodology report that humanity's current demands uh on the earth's biological systems now exceed their productive capacities by 70%. That's seven zero percent per year. Combining our excessive demand for the planet's biological productivity with the human-caused biodiversity extinction crisis, human-caused climate change, and other human-caused environmental crises, it's plain that our current condition is not ecologically sustainable. Our path back to environmental sustainability, if it exists, no doubt will be complex and challenging. One element is clear: we must protect and restore the planet's ecosystems. So it's vital that our next Comprehensive Plan strongly support protection of county natural resources. On other topics, historic resources are important to our identity and understanding of ourselves. The county should help protect them. And parks are important to the quality of life, especially in our urban areas. Finally, I understand that the AC44 team now considers addition of a rural areas chapter in the new plan. I commend staff's willingness to consider this addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keller.
Good evening, Chair Claiborne and Commissioners. It's good to be with you this evening. My name is Genevieve Keller. I'm President of Preservation Piedmont, and I'm representing them this evening. Uh, our organization, our advocacy committee, has carefully reviewed your draft goals and objectives for the historic scenic and cultural resources. Uh, we are a regional nonprofit organization dedicated to the preservation of the built environment and building an appreciation for historic resources throughout our region. We've been working closely with the, with the city for too many years now, uh, as they've worked on a cop plan and their zoning ordinance. Uh, and, and we have, uh, taken up your issues, uh, with a great deal of interest because we believe in, in regional cooperation and coordination. Um, we have been considering several issues that we would like to bring to you tonight for your consideration. Uh, one of those is your supplemental goal two with a focus on protection of resources uh with adding language that promotes the preservation of the county's significant cultural landscapes. Uh, we hope that you will consider an additional objective to pursue proactive measures, programs, and regulations to protect Albemarle's historic scenic and cultural resources, including cultural landscapes, districts, archaeological sites, buildings, structures, buildings, and objects. Uh, and we hope that you will coordinate with and incorporate historic scenic and cultural resource values within a rural area plan and small area plans for those rural villages and communities. Some future actions or strategies that we envision might include updating or preparing a new historic preservation plan, creating a historic preservation ordinance, which is about three decades too late, including enabling a locally designated historic district or two, permanently funding a qualified historic preservation planner, permanently funding a rural area planner. Uh, and we also hope that you will prepare a rural area plan that addresses natural and working landscapes, cultural landscapes, and preserves and promotes the very aspects of the landscape that provide residents with a sense of place and well-being, and that address climate change and support the local economy through tourism and economic development. We hope that this rural area plan could be comprehensive and be informed by significant public engagement. We also hope that there will be community-driven small area plans for the rural villages and communities, and that it will, you will protect rural area values and character through inclusion of a rural areas chapter in the updated Comprehensive Plan. Uh, we know that previous comp plans have included a rural area chapter, and it's something we would very much like to see you continue. Thank you for taking the time tonight to review our comments, which I will hand out to you. Uh, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Before we officially move into the work session, I'll ask, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Saying none, I will move, uh, actually to the consent agenda. I apologize. Moving to the consent agenda, which is on everyone's next sheet. There's two items there. Uh, meeting minutes from September the 12th and September the 26th of this year. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? So moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
And Mr. Missile.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And, and with that, we will now move into the work session. So CPA 2021, quadruple zero two AC44 Goals and Objectives for Natural and Historic Resources and Parks and Recreation. So that's, thank you, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members. I'm Ben Holt. I'm with the Long Range Planning Team. And I'll be presenting on AC44 Phase Two for Draft Goals and Objectives. Uh, as an overview of what we're discussing tonight, we're gonna present a snapshot of where we are in Phase Two of AC44 and also discuss the process for drafting the goals and objectives. Uh, the three topics for the Comprehensive Plan that we'll be covering tonight are environmental stewardship, parks and recreation, historic, scenic, and cultural resources. Staff will give a brief presentation on the draft goals and objectives for each of these topics, and then we'll pause for a discussion of approximately 20 to 25 minutes for each one. Uh, and at the end of the presentation, we'll present next steps in the AC44 process. So the purpose of the work session is to receive information on each of the planned topics and consider whether the goals align with the framework and what's missing, missing from the draft goals and objectives. The goals and objectives have been drafted with input from the community, county committees, the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and the content also includes input from county staff, partner agencies, a review of the existing 2015 plan, incorporating best practices from other jurisdictions throughout the country, and direction from the framework for an equitable and resilient community, which sets a vision for what the county aspires to be in 2044, a green and resilient, welcoming and equitable, connected and accessible, thriving and prosperous community. The goals and objectives are directed by the county vision and the mission and the AC44 framework. These goals and objectives provide direction for each topic. A goal is defined as a high-level and long-term direction, whereas an objective is a specific outcome or target to accomplish a goal. Last of all, an action step is a policy, infrastructure improvement, planning effort, or activity used to achieve and implement the plan objectives. The framework and big ideas incorporate the community input from Phase One, the board priorities of equity as directed by the resolution for an equitable and inclusive community in 2019, and the county's mission statement. It also incorporates Climate Action Plan of 2020 and PC and board input as well as the goals from the 2015 Comprehensive Plans and American Planning Association best practices. The purpose of the framework was to find a common ground and build a foundation of community support for policy guidance that incorporates the priorities of equity and climate action and also improves the plan usability by consolidating the content and highlighting interconnections among planned topics. Uh, regarding the plan links, consolidating and reducing the plan is a strategy for a more accessible and user-friendly plan. The current 2015 Comprehensive Plan is 125,853 words, and as a frame of reference, that is longer than The Hobbit. Uh, prominent plans that have been published over the last several years are trending significantly shorter. Those include Charlottesville, Greensboro, North Carolina, and Richmond. Uh, and those range from 24,000 to 72,000 words, or roughly 40 to 80% shorter than our existing plan. This current Step Three of Phase Two focuses on goals and objectives. This is the first of three work sessions on the goals and objectives for the planned topics. The following two work sessions for the rest of the topic groups will be held in November and December, and I'll provide further details on those towards the end of the presentation. To quickly recap community engagement, Step One focused on the priorities for the planned topics. It included a questionnaire on the challenges, opportunities, and priorities, and it had a high number of respondents for the questionnaire. We also had six pop-ups, one in each Magisterial District, a working group meeting, and community chat kits for participants to discuss challenges and opportunities. In Step Two, we focused on planning toolkits. This involved five open houses, and four of those are in person and one online. We also had questionnaires on each of the four topic, uh, topics for the toolkits and a working group meeting and another round of community chat kits. Although the response late, excuse me, response rate was lower for that questionnaire, we had a high number of visitors to the AC44 website during that time period. Let's get one. Uh, in this current Step Three of Phase Two for the draft goals and objectives, we have a questionnaire open on each topic of environmental stewardship, historic resources, and parks and rec. We will keep these surveys open throughout the rest of Step Three. The surveys for the remaining topics will be published in advance of each work session. Staff has also held chat with a planner opportunities in September and October, and these coincided with two board meetings and the Rivanna River Basin Conference. Staff also presented recently at the Natural Heritage Commission on October 5th, and we also held two pop-ups where we shared information at the Loop Deville event and the Community Day at Simpson Park. That brings us to our first topic of environmental stewardship. I'd like to note that the topic name has changed from natural resources to environmental stewardship, placing a focus on protecting and restoring the natural environment and also recognizing the benefits beyond just a set of resources that may be used. Environmental stewardship includes climate action, resilience, clean waterways and water sources, stormwater management, biodiversity, and ecosystem protection, habitat restoration, native plant protection, waste management, and recycling. It's connected to other planned topics, including land use, transportation, and parks. Some of the community input themes we've heard are protecting and restoring water quality, ensuring drinking water supply, disaster preparedness, including response to floods, heat, drought, and storms. Also protecting and replacing trees, protecting habitats by prioritizing the biodiversity action plan efforts, dark skies protection, improving the resilience through community hubs for emergency response, and supporting community gardens and local food systems, as well as reducing waste and expanding recycling. For the draft goals and objectives, I'll highlight each goal and give a very brief overview of the objective content, and we can return to these slides if you desire during this discussion portion. Goal one seeks to undertake climate action by implementing the Climate Action Plan of 2020 and meeting Board of Supervisors' targets to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 45% in 2030 and to achieve zero emissions by 2050. The objectives include increasing multimodal transportation, utilizing clean energy, and reducing energy use, as well as restoring forests to support sustainable agriculture and waste reduction. And goal two, it seeks to, it seeks resilience to natural hazards and the impacts of climate change, protecting residents, property, and ecosystems from damage. The objectives include implementing the climate adaptation and resilience plan and hazard mitigation, addressing flood impacts and heat impacts, water supply, wildfires, invasive pests, and disease vectors. Goal three is on protecting water sources and water bodies throughout the county. Objectives include restoration enhancement of wetlands and stream buffers, addressing stormwater management, and protecting groundwater. Goal four is on implementing the biodiversity action plan to achieve biological diversity, ecological integrity, and ecosystem resilience. The objectives include protecting habitats such as forest blocks, protecting wildlife corridors, stream habitats and wetlands, utilizing land conservation, supporting native plant species, and updating the biodiversity action plan. Goal four is, or excuse me, goal five is about creating a sustainable system through products, materials, and resources that are reused, refurbished, and recycled to reduce waste. The objectives include utilizing sustainable and reusable materials, reducing materials consumption, reducing landfill waste, reducing food waste and yard waste, as well as improving waste management practices. Regarding the existing Comprehensive Plan, the topic has been expanded from one goal to five goals. This is to organize the subthemes for the goals and objectives. The key themes from the 2015 plan that have been continued include emphasis on waterways, drinking water, biodiversity, habitat protection, and hazard mitigation. The recommendations now include a stronger focus on climate resilience and mitigation. Associated county plans and policies will be incorporated, including the Stream Health Initiative and Climate Resilience Plan. The online questionnaire for the draft goals and objectives currently has 10 respondents. The multiple choice questions ask how well each goal supports the framework for an equitable and resilient community. The answer options are strongly supports, somewhat supports, or does not support the framework. For this particular topic, the responses for each goal either strongly support or somewhat supports the framework as, uh, as a majority. You can see that, um, does not support was either 11% or 0% for those options. Uh, the comments of, uh, the, the open-ended comment question of what's missing uh included topics of dark skies protection, tree protection, accounting for land use practices on land owned by the county, private owners and other entities, also incorporating more measurables for goals and objectives, and addressing the rate of development and impervious surfaces. So at this point, we will pause for discussion for the draft goals and objectives of this topic, and we're seeking high levels feedback. Uh, first, we will address whether the draft goals are aligned with the framework, and second, we will address what is missing from the, the draft goals and objectives. And again, we've allocated approximately 20 to 25 minutes for this discussion. So with that, have at it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Holt. Great, great job. Um, I think we're probably gonna be closer to that 25-minute mark is, is my guess as we start to discuss these. Um, I might tweak this just ever so slightly, just maybe make the best use of our time together. And I'll pitch this to the commission. You tell me if it sounds reasonable, but maybe we do what I would call a lightning round, where everybody goes around and maybe there's three prompts that we want to think about. Um, first is, you know, is it tracking? Is it tracking in the right direction? Um, the second one is pretty close to item one that you see on your screen here. Um, do we feel there's appropriately being vetted through that lens of climate action and equity? And then maybe the third prompt, which is kind of aligning with number two that you see here is what's missing or what needs to be further explored more. So is it tracking? Is it properly vetted through climate action equity lens? What's missing, uh, or what needs further exploration? Maybe from that, we'll see some topics that, you know, if we all had the same topic, maybe that's where we spend our time. And then if staff just gives me about a five-minute warning, we can go back around and you can read off any comments that you've done on your own time that maybe didn't get to, that way it can be recorded. Does that sound like a reasonable approach for 25 minutes? Okay. All right. So with that, we'll do the lightning round. I'll start with Mr. Murray. The floor is yours.
Yes. So first off, I think staff has done a great job with this. Um, I, I would say that, um, if I would say, I mean, it's definitely headed in the right direction. So to answer the question, I would like to see a lot more references to, um, there's a lot of topics that transcend different sections, and it'd be nice to see little pointers to see, see also in this, in this section. And I'll come back to that later, but.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Missile?
Sure. Thanks. Uh, absolutely. Think it's tracking. Um, I, gosh, I have so many comments. I'm trying to think of how best to organize them in a lightning round here.
Um, sorry.
No, it's all good. Uh, the, I would say that the one area that I would call attention to are, um, appropriate measures, reassessments, and adjustments, and how that's built into these, this plan. That'd be my lightning round answer.
Okay. Commissioner Carazana?
Yeah, thank you for staff, and I think it's very well organized, uh, presentation, and I appreciate that. And, um, so I, I, a lightning round, I, I guess I'll focus on some areas that I I believe are missing, or I didn't see them there, and it's been mentioned, uh, emails that we've received, but also in some of the comments we heard, uh, dark skies is, is a more and more increasing issue uh for our county, you know, we at, you know, UVA, which is my other time where I've spent most of my day. We've been evaluating that and the use of LEDs, and I think it's a, it's a, it's an important area that we need to dive a little bit deeper into that I didn't see mentioned really at all. So.
Thank you, Chair. So I, I would sort of back up the, 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 um, dark skies, but I would also suggest that that's a, that's a tri-jurisdiction issue. That more county cannot just sort of say, cannot tackle that or solve it, and that that's a city, UVA and county, and perhaps that's an area where we can all work together to make that happen. What I would like to see in the environmental stewardship piece is sort of the conversation about what is happening in boundaries that were established many years ago. For instance, I have a feeling, I have a sense that we were very, we made some decisions about what's a development area and what's a rural, and what's a rural area based on the use of water, based on the impact of water. And I would like us to sort of have a conversation in environmental stewardship to see whether or not there are different ways to see whether or not there are different ways in which water impacts can be mitigated. For instance, there are some, I would imagine, houses or structures or developments that are in the rural area, but they're on the rural area by a hundred meters. And the hundred meters is no longer relevant to the various ways in which things can be, can be mitigated today. Plus, it may be that a, a slight modification, not a wholesale modification, but a slight modification may allow some, some houses or some structures or some developments which are in the rural area to easily link up with the sewage, with the public works and public sewage, which will also go to trying to mitigate some of the older sewage, uh, issues which are propping up that in fact, if we could put them into the system, would keep, keep the water clean and would also give people an opportunity not to push so far to, to sort of manage to mitigate by through management, some of the issues that we're starting to see with that kind of runoff. The other thing that I would also like to sort of have some sense of, when particularly when we talked to environmental stewardship, we talked a little bit about this, and we talked about, about this the last time, is that one ordinance is not, will not solve everything. And so there are some things that I think Commissioner Murray had and I had, had a lightbulb idea that there may in fact be some branches which, which contribute heavier to the, to the risk or to the, um, the issues that we may see with our, our, our drinking water. And those are the areas we should have a different type of ordinance on them as opposed to trying to say, let's create an ordinance that just sort of blankets everyone. And then the, the third thing that I would sort of mention in the lightning round, if I might, is that we have a lot of conversations about steep slopes. And we also fall down on the fact that, oh, it's really not a steep slope. It was really done when Joe and Joe Zett Smith went out there and did that farm, and that's how we got that through. Or when the, or when Vidal went and cut that mountain range, cut the mountain up to go to the, to create the Blue Ridge Mountain Path. So that's how we got it. So I would actually sort of suggest as we're looking at opportunities here to, to perhaps do something with our steep slopes to try and ascertain what may be a natural steep slope that's critical and what may be a human or a human steep slope, which is nice, but is not necessarily part of our, part of the, what I will say, the incumbent natural resources that we are so apt to protecting. And I think there's new technology around that could, that facilitate a reexamination of what is a critical and natural steep slope versus which was one that came through the, the years of agriculture and building that tends, I should say century now of, of Alamo County. Is that really the same thing? And I have other things which, uh, but those were the things that climbing on my, my.
Right. And then for me, I would say yes, certainly tracking in the right direction. Um, I had, I had done a comment about the tracking piece, so plus one on that. Um, I was expecting to see, you know, building reuse, right? Uh, as you talk about climate and carbon and our, our goals there. Um, everyone knows that it's, um, more climate friendly to use an existing building, and we're seeing more and more of that now if you look at the data. And then, uh, lastly, I was curious, I'm not sure if this fits in here, but as we talk about resilience, where are the impacts on business continuity, right? So if there's a flood and we're talking about, um, resilience and continuity in the built environment, does it have an impact on business continuity? And does that belong in here? Is that thing, I'm just tossing that out there for discussion. But, um, as I was taking notes in that lightning round, I feel like, uh, there's two buckets that kind of bubbled up. One is like a, oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Moore.
Hey there.
You still with us, sir?
I am still with you. Hey, um, I'm glad to, uh, uh, still be a part of the conversation too. Um, no, I think, uh, I think it's tracking like you all. Um, I do think it's, it's in line with the lens. Um, uh, and I didn't see a whole lot missing per se. I, I honestly, um, uh, have kind of a slightly different take on this where, where it, it feels like, um, when there are so many things on kind of a, a long, long list. I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about what, um, gets, uh, uh, what, what goes missing once this actually starts being implemented. And so for me, I, I would put a special emphasis on the, the parts in, uh, goal two. Um, uh, the ones about, about resiliency and impacts on people, uh, and how we, um, handle that and prepare for that. Uh, because I do feel like we're, we're, we're headed towards a whole lot more macro level. Um, crises and emergencies headed our way, and, and that's related to what you just mentioned, Commissioner Clayburn, in terms of business resiliency and continuity as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I was just taking notes.
Chair, if I could come alongside you for, for your comment about, um, about reuse of buildings, I think there's an opportunity here, and this may be helpful all around. If there was a list or an inventory of county and school-owned buildings and land, that if nothing else, those could be models for others on how do we use things? Or how do we purpose things? So I would suggest in that area there, and it, it may actually also work under the, um, when we look at natural historic, historic scenic and natural risk and cultural resources, that we also look at sort of what's the inventory of land that people who sit in these chairs for much longer periods of time than we get to sit in them.
Right.
Um, what would they say if they were to say, we're going to use ourselves or use some of our own land as, 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 as examples on how to carry forth and how to do some of this work?
Well stated, well stated.
So, yeah, I may have misunderstood the exercise, but are we going to do each three separately? Are we supposed to do each one at a time? Because I only did the first.
Yeah, but just one at a time. That's, that's correct.
But, but I'm, but this conversation is naturally leading into, I would say, the topic of equity. And, and I would say that, um, one of the big things that I've noticed back when I was serving as an elected official on the Stormwater Conservation District, we had people come before us, um, who were applying for, um, septic repairs, who not only didn't have a functional septic system, but didn't have running water in Alamo County. And so we realized we, we were coming from the Conservation District, we're coming out from this from the perspective of cleaning up streams and solving an environmental problem. But as we got into things like septic repairs and we've realized that there's also an environmental justice aspect to a lot of this work, that I think there, you know, when you have people in Alamo County that have no functional septic system, that have no running water, and we can help fix that and solve an environmental problem at the same time, keep those people living in their house. So we're solving affordable housing too, because making sure people aren't displaced. Um, that I think that's a really big, um, issue in terms of equity. Because there's not specific numbers on this, I can't say for sure, but I do know for sure that when I was a kid growing up next to a historic African, African, African-American community, um, in Ivy, that there are people there that had no running water and septic. And I strongly suspect that a lot of these areas with poorly functioning septic and running water are also in some of these historic African-American communities that have been long neglected. And so I think that there, you know, there's a said, I think environmental justice needs to be something that we include in here.
That's a great comment. So as I look at these buckets, they're kind of forming, I kind of see one as operational in a sense, um, which would be the direction setting, how we take measures. Uh, there's a geography piece to it and you can, might be a better word for that, but that's where I would put the dark skies and water impacts and steep slopes. And then I like that the term, uh, the environmental justice or the equity piece where I think resiliency kind of fits in there, utilities and things like that. So, um, maybe we start with the operational piece, which was a, a Jaden direction setting, cross referencing, uh, measures, reassessments and adjustments. It's like tracking process and progress. Uh, so I'll open up the floor.
I'll throw out a couple of comments if I could. Um, one, I think that needs to go with that, and not that this is a fourth category or, or not, but education, thinking about how we can not just say these things, but how we can promote and educate the community to be able to uh, make positive steps towards doing these things and understanding what resources are available to them to be able to do that. So I think as we measure, as we assess, as we adjust, there are ways to learn, right? And to teach and to educate. And so making sure that that's, I think woven into the process of, of doing those things is important. Um, I think partnerships, uh, is another part of that where it's an ongoing and continual learning process. We're collaborating with new people. We're, you know, reaching out to the city, to the university, to others and learning, um, a learning from each other in, in terms of those areas. And then, um, one other piece of it that I think is important is funding and thinking about a capital plan to go along with all of these great goals. And, you know, how do you actually implement these things? Is this something that the development community is looking to participate in? Is it something that the county is looking to promote and help with? Um, are there grants, other funding opportunities out there that could potentially help, um, bring some, some focus to these? Um, and then I think related to this, maybe stretching a little bit here. Sorry for rambling, but the other one is economic development. And I think as we think through everything that has to do with most of what we're talking about tonight, what are impacts on economic development? What are our strategies there? And, um, and how do we address those and react to positive and influences and challenges that these might present?
Any one to weigh in or follow?
So Chair, if I could, I, I would say in the, um, the framework for an equitable and resilient community, the sort of last bit on page four, the top of page four, was in fact to sort of come alongside of, of what Commissioner Missile had just shared, was just sort of brought up with us. But that whole piece there is how I sort of looked at all the various parts. So everything that he just said there about what's the, what's, what are we creating on both a, a place to live and a place to work for today and for tomorrow? And so that the two paragraphs at the top of the page are thriving and prospering community, prosperous community not only has an economic benefit to it, but also has sort of a lifestyle, a well-lived lifestyle in it. And how do we do that? That integrates both, both as, as some of the individuals at the, in the open period talked about the protection of rural, I would all stretch them to say it is not just about the rural part. It's not just a part about the development part of Alamo County, but this is about Alamo County. And we are both, we are both rural, we are both and suburban. And I'm not going to use the word ex-urban because we're not really ex-urban because the, the city's not an urban center. But we're, we're both a, a, a place that's sort of, that has this sort of, um, emerging or re-emerging attempt to sort of be a, a place where there are all these multiple centers. How do you do that? How do you do that in a place that a comp, comp plan is sort of pointing the way to that? So I would come alongside, alongside that. The other thing that I, that I might ask is that in the staff's report on page four, staff mentioned that, well, if we look at the, and we look at the sort of the coverage of the forest in Alamo County and that, that, that forest or the woods there sequesters in approximately nine hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two hundred tons of, of carbon dioxide. My question, so what do we want?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, okay, it's there. Well, what do we want? Do we want, you know, a million and a half? Or do we want, or can we, or can we improve the balance? If I look at the nature conservancy, the nature conservancy says that it should be about sixteen tons versus two tons. Uh, we're doing sixteen tons versus two tons per person. And so what would it take? When, when we're talking about what are the things that we want to do, the measurements? What would it take for us to actually live into that kind of, that space? And what would that look like across our entire community? So that's where I was sort of saying, what's our entire, a community approach and not a trifacated approach to things?
Yeah. So just to respond to some of those things, I mean, I think, um, and one of the things I, I struggle with in this, this too, is that, you know, a lot of these, well, first of all, the, the rural area and the growth area are very different, with very different challenges. The conservation challenges of the rural area, um, are unique in the sense that, um, a lot of that, from a policy perspective, for example, um, a lot of the policies that apply in the growth area in terms of stormwater and riparian buffers, they do not apply the rural area because of agriculture. That creates some unique challenges. Um, but plus we have large habitat blocks. Um, we have, um, you know, we have, now we have the, um, industrial solar on the horizon for some parts of the, the rural area. Um, and, and it's not just, you know, I would say too, people always give, talk about old growth forests and large forests, but also, um, old growth grasslands are a thing too. So how do we manage grasslands in a way, um, that helps sequester carbon as well? Um, so I do support, as some people said, um, I do support a rural area chapter. I think that is something we need. Um, and I think, and I support a growth area chapter because I think that the challenges of those two areas in terms of land use are going to be very different when we get to that land use section. I think, um, well, I'll leave it there.
And I was at a, a couple of comments before we move on to the, the second bucket and welcome, uh, Commissioner Firehawk and Madam Clerk. It was about six forty-five PM roughly when Commissioner Firehawk arrived.
Thank you.
Um, going back to the measurements piece, um, I would also add, like, we talk about greenhouse gas, that carbon reduction, uh, which is really prevalent in the, the built environment right now. And just making a, a note around the objectives under the first goal, they're, they're very quali- quantitative, which I think is really a very strong thing. If we know that buildings are roughly forty percent of the, the cause of greenhouse gases, then I would expect to see something around buildings and that proactiveness, right? And trying to, uh, reduce carbon reductions, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. Um, I think those are only comments that have not already been said, so. The second bucket we had was geography, which included the dark skies and steep slopes and water impacts. So I'll open up the floor for that one.
So I just wanted to, like to a comment that Commissioner Bibens said in terms of, it is, it is not just the county, right? Where we talk about a lot of these things. Um, I think for water, I would say it's a similar, similar issue, how we deal with our, our water resources and and other things that UVA are doing or the county's doing it, they all feed into one another. So, so it all, it, it does take that collaboration that, that Commissioner Missile mentioned. So I think that's a piece that we're not great at, either the county or UVA or the city. We're not great at communicating all the time, particularly with these longer, um, so we may have a goal, right? That we all share. Uh, but then as you step, step down into the, what would you call it? The, the, uh, actionable next steps or the actionable steps, I think that's where we, we, the communications breaks down at times. So I would encourage that we look at not only have, having shared goals, which I think we can all agree on, a lot of these are shared goals, uh, between, uh, these, these entities. But, but in how we take those next steps, how we actually act upon them is where I would argue that our communication begins to, to break down. So I would encourage you to think about that and how we actually begin to implement some of these goals. Not, not, not in, in only one, you know, looking at just the county, but but looking at all the entities that are being impacted or are impacting certain areas like dark skies, like our water resource.
Any, any other comments in that bucket?
Yeah. Um, so talking about dark skies again, I, I did notice that dark skies is in there, but it's under the historic, um, section. It's another, it's another, um, it's another example of where you might need pointers from one section to, to not, to not, to another. Um, but I mean, I would argue that it more rightly belongs in the environmental section. Um, so one of the things that happens with LEDs in particular is their effect on wildlife and night flying insects. Um, we have some iconic species in Alamo County like the Luna moth, um, Sacropium moss and other things. And you might say, well, why do we care about moths? Well, ninety percent of baby birds diet are caterpillars. So you lose your moths, you lose your butterflies, you lose your birds. Um, and so you, you have a chain reaction through ecosystem that's really impacting biodiversity. So, um, so yeah, and I think in terms of, um, also I think in terms of, you know, I think tree protection, I think we've long needed um, a tree protection ordinance in Alamo County. I think we need standards for tree planting as Karen has brought forward before. Um, and I think too, um, in terms of, in terms of water, I think, um, I think there's a lot of opportunities that we can really explore in terms of low impact development. Um, we've talked several times about, you know, um, trying to incentivize low impact development. There may be some opportunities to require low impact development, but that's a matter of research. So, um, those are some things I'd look at. Um, but I'll, I'll leave it for there. I'll have more comments.
Yeah. Well, in an effort to kind of move us along, maybe just go around the horn one more time. If there's any comments that you would make sure gets on the record that we didn't talk about, um, let's do that now and then we'll move on to the second one. Sorry that we're running a little short on time on that.
To him first.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Moore, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, I, not really. I, I wanted to, uh, plus one, Commissioner Murray's, um, comments about, um, environmental justice. And if we can find, uh, uh, write-in ways to, um, pursue projects that, that directly benefit people and the, uh, sort of lived environment around them at the same time. Uh, and also plus one, Commissioner Missile's, uh, comment about, um, if it's appropriate and what If it's appropriate and whether we can somehow write in funding sources into this, uh, because there is a lot of ambitious uh development work. In this particular set of goals, it's a very long set of objectives and um. Um, it might uh, it might be worth considering including that in particular for this one.
Thank you. If there's any way to keep that photo up, that'll remind me that he's here, that'd be great. Uh, right now, I see a logo, uh, usually, so, um, so Commissioner Vivins, I'll start with you, any last will and testament?
I would like to sort of come alongside of of Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Missile. Back to my comment about that, I believe that if we could go back and look at how some of our development and rural lines, uh, development area. Lines were drawn, some of that was drawn in some sort of sense that it was a protection of water quality. And I would like to see at some point a reevaluation, going back to what Fred said, a reevaluation. Is this not, or are are there not other ways in which to mitigate impacts on water? That may in fact be drawing some of these areas into the system. To do some of the things that Commissioner Mary, which I think you're talking more on some of the sort of significant rural areas, but even if we look at sort of. If we look at Croze and some of the sort of historic areas in Croze that may have had people with more limited means uh living in them. Um, along sort of railroad tracks that go up through through Croze, some of that is probably, some of those houses are probably not on the system. And they may have failing systems. And so if we want to talk about equity and we want to talk about how do we improve? And guard our viral, our volatile, their, our valuable water system, I think it, there is a way to do that, Chair. That may mean flexing on what's rural on some of those boundary areas.
Good comments. Commissioner Missile?
Sure, just a couple of things, um, one is, I know we've talked about measurements, which I may be wrongly, but. Mostly think of how do we measure progress that we're making? Um, I want to echo something that I think Commissioner Bivens said, which is, it's also about inventory. So what do we have now? How much natural hardwood forest do we have? Not sure we know, where are they located? Is it in farmland? Is that then therefore, because of our ordinance, they can cut it down without asking, right? Where and how do we value each of those resources? I love the fact that the title was changed to environmental stewardship, that's. That's an awesome move, I think that's exactly right because, again, Commissioner Bivens, I think, you know, you touched on, this is about preservation. Stewardship and quality of life. And so it's a bigger picture thing that we're, we're, not that this isn't big enough, but it's also something that's important. And then the. Unifying, yeah, I like that. And then the last thing I mentioned is, as we've seen with our affordable housing aspiration. It has taken two years for us to sort of get to a point where we might be talking about incentives. That might be potentially active and we almost had a joint work session that we weren't quite ready for. I just want to highlight again the need for, and Commissioner Murray mentioned incentives. We need to be thinking about that now, early in the process and make sure we have traction there.
Yeah, I just, sorry, I I just wanted to add that we do have these great incentives that a lot of people aren't aware of. For example, we have the Alamo Conservation Assistance Program. There's still plenty of money out there for people to apply for. Um, the AHEP program, that's a program, speaking of environmental justice. Um, I would really love to see more of funding for AHEP and more attention to that program because that's. Can help keep people in the houses and solve environmental issues. A few things that I I wanted to mention that I didn't yet, um, as I said, I think a lot of these. When I looked at this, a lot of the challenges I faced were. A lot of these environmental issues stretch into other areas, stretch into transportation and to land use. When we talk about climate change, I think we need to identify high risk, high fire risk areas in the county. Um, there's a lot of, housing is encroaching upon the Shenandoah National Forest. And we've seen what happens in California when housing gets too close to to national forests and wild areas. It becomes difficult for the the Park Service to do controlled burns, but then also when fires get started. Um, they put homes at risk. And I I hope we can get to the point that's where we, just as we have, um. We have flood hazard overlays, we should have fire hazard overlays and discourage new homes in those areas. Um, but once again, that's given the land use section. I think one of the ways, if you look in um the staff notes, it talks about the large forest blocks and fragmentation. One of the ways that fragmentation happens is by paving of gravel roads in our rural area. And so I think. That'll probably be in the transportation section, but I think it has environmental consequences, um, that should probably be footnoted here somewhere. And then, um, I think. Um, invasive species and management of invasive species, I think that that's a huge thing that needs to be referenced in here, it's kind of lumped together with native plants. But I think it it transcends a lot of different spaces, it could go in parks, it could go in environment. But there are new ordinances that are enabled by the state that we could be adopting, um, managing things like bamboo that we're not, we're not doing. And then, um.
Thank you, Commissioner Firehawk?
Apologies for being late at a work emergency. So I I'll just make a quick general statement and then I'll run through a a just a quick list. And just note that I understand that some of my ideas may be what you would call actions, but I just am a specific brain. So, all right, so my general statement, I I actually really liked, uh, most of what I read, I would say that, um. In 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 my work, objectives are usually specific and measurable. And there's quite a few of our objectives that say increase or do more of. To your earlier point that you made on the dais about how much, we actually could calculate, for example, how much more carbon we could. Capture by planning X more acres of canopy. Understanding that we'll still lose some canopy as we continue to grow, but if we want to be aspirational and put numbers as aspirations, there's a lot of really simple. Models that we could apply. Um, and I, so I would like to see more specificity because uh the, some of the objectives sound just like a goal. Around, you know, they're just like restating the goal, it just says increase or do more of this. So a couple of quick points, and again, apologies if they're too specific. We we referenced the biodiversity action plan quite a bit, which is a really good plan. And I'm proud to say that my firm helped contribute some of the mapping work for that. Uh, but the, I was dated on, I was based on a one meter land cover analysis for Alamo County that is many years old now. So I think that map needs to be updated, the good news is that we can compare. How many of those large habitat blocks we have lost in certain areas, um, and how we're doing. Um, so I think, you know, we can't just rely on that plan because it's getting pretty out of date. Um, I also wanted to see an emphasis on um. More landowner education, and again, maybe that's more specific, um, but we talk about buffers. But I just don't find many landowners even know anything about buffers. I just, uh, and that also includes fencing cattle out of creeks and, you know, all the other measures that lenders can engage in. Um, I'd like to see an emphasis on low-impact development incentives. Uh, constructed green infrastructure, I know we've talked about it, but um. We need a more infiltrative landscape. We've been paving like mad and the question is, how can we create more opportunities for infiltration? And there are incentives we could get to in the specific action section when we get to that later in the in the process. Uh, two more points real quick. Storm prep and recovery. Um, we, we don't talk about what what happens in a storm, you know, we have a tornado, a directo, whatever they call that thing. Uh, hurricane, uh, floods. Um, uh, we don't talk about how we recover from that, ice storms, I mean, there's a whole host of. Recovery of the landscape that we need to be better prepared for, and frankly, if we do that work. We will be more likely to get reimbursed by the, by FEMA. Um, so we need to really beef up that. That work and no, it is not adequately covered in our emergency plan for the county. So that's for the environment, there's a whole host of additional actions we could take, which I could elaborate on more later. Lastly, we do talk about protection of groundwater. That's really important for our county, but I want to be clear that we do not have a groundwater study. Our groundwater is quite complex and I don't have the time nor does anyone want to hear me go into that tonight. But some, some mention that we, that that there's a lot that's not known. And whether or not we want to aspire to doing any groundwater studies. Um, to to look at how, you know, our aquifers and where they are and how plentiful they are, that would be a a large cost, but. Do we want to do that? Do we want to do that in some of the areas that people have talked about? Uh, for where growth might happen, anyway, I just, just want to point that out, that our knowledge on that is is low. And and that's not a criticism of our county because most counties don't have a groundwater study. Nelson, Nelson actually did invest in one years ago, uh, that was fairly good. Uh, and last real quick comment to your point about fire maps, I did show the Board of Supervisors years ago, an ignition map. That the Virginia Department of Forestry created that shows which areas of the county are high fire risks, so that is something we can just grab. But we could also talk about when you get to the action stage, encouraging fire-wise development. Construction, we've had in the six years I've been on this dais, one developer actually talked about being fire-wise. In fact, I think it was the people doing the uh glamping project. And I was elated to hear that, but I don't think it's well-known that there are techniques we can use. And it's, it's just easy, it's not that hard, okay, that was it, I'm sorry to rattle through a whole bunch of things.
No, all good, Commissioner Moore, I'm not going to forget you this time, did you uh put all your comments up?
Uh, I'm all good for this one, thank you.
All right, thank you, um, and I'll just make one general comment that's not necessarily specific to environmental stewardship, just in general. If equity is one of our cannons, then I think we had to be sensitive to some of the images we're using, right? When you flip through the images, I didn't see much diversity or equity in those images, right? And so being sensitive to that piece of this truly one of our cannons. Um, Mr. Holt, pass it back to you, Parks and Recreation.
All right, thank you, if we could get the presentation back on the screen. Uh, Parks and Rec Recreation play a critical role in the quality of life for a healthy and thriving community. They provide opportunities for community members to play, enjoy nature and participate in athletics. Greenways and trails provide bike and pedestrian connections to parks, neighborhoods and other key destinations. Parks and greenways as a topic also overlaps with environmental stewardship, protection and restoration of the natural environment. An additional topic overlaps include land use, transportation and community facilities for Parks and Rec as a whole. Compute, community input themes that we've heard include expanding the park system. Through playgrounds, nature areas, green spaces and pocket parks. There's also a desire to expand the greenway trail networks and access to waterways, also known as blueway trails. There's support for expanding sports facilities to meet growing demands, proactively planning for parks and green spaces prior to development. Improving amenities such as restrooms, picnic tables and benches. Improving wayfinding and signage, improving user accessibility and accommodating a wider range of facilities users. Uh, also different age groups, providing trails, civic spaces and other amenities within activity centers. And also within rural crossroads communities. Goal one call calls for the planning and providing of a countywide park system and greenway network that offers opportunities for recreation. Contact with nature and supports public health, quality of life, as well as tourism and economic vitality. The objectives include planning for needs of current and future community members, accelerating the implementation and expansion of facilities. Integrating more multimodal planning, aligning with regional and statewide plans, improving access to public schools facilities. And improving information and signage. Goal two provides direction to fund, develop and deliver parks and greenways in accordance with the needs of a growing population. And accommodating development patterns. Objectives include prioritizing and implementing parks and greenways projects already identified in the comprehensive plan and master plans. As well as accelerating the development of parks and greenways in the development areas, expanding greenways and blueways facilities along the Rivana River. And providing more opportunities for nature-focused experiences and increasing the amount of county-owned land that is designated for parks and greenways. Goal three is to enhance and update existing parks, greenways, blueways and community centers. As well as other recreation amenities to provide opportunities for both active and passive recreation. The objectives include enhancing and improving amenities in existing parks, expanding greenways and trails and networks. As well as increasing facilities that incorporate universal access standards. Goal four is to increase the accessibility, connectivity and usability for all community members to parks and recreation facilities. The objectives include expanding multimodal transportation options, increasing universal access to parks and greenways and community centers. And supporting access improvements at Sugar Hollow, which would be in partnership with Shenandoah National Park. Goal five is on utilizing sustainable land management and facility maintenance. The objectives include using environmentally sustainable land management practices for parks and greenways. The objectives include land management that protects biological diversity and ecological integrity. While conserving and restoring biodiversity, stream and forest health. Goal six calls for county collaboration with external stakeholders and partners. And to provide volunteer projects and programs to enhance parks and recreation facilities. The objectives include sustaining existing partnerships, identifying community needs through parks and recreation needs assessment. Establishing new partnerships and volunteer programs to improve public facilities. Goal seven is to provide recreation opportunities that are welcoming and inclusive and meet the needs of an expanding population. The objectives include providing a variety of recreation programs and classes. Ensuring opportunities for both indoor and outdoor recreation and expanding the provision of multipurpose athletic fields. As compared to the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, this topic has expanded from one to seven goals. Key themes carried forward include developing parks and greenway systems. Protecting natural areas, expanding access to greenways and blueways. Providing multimodal access to parks and other destinations and regional coordination. There is now a stronger emphasis on planning a countywide parks and greenway system. Accelerating the development of facilities, enhancing, enhancing visitor experience, utilizing sustainable practices. And responding to the changing community needs. This particular topic questionnaire currently has eleven respondents at the time this was published. Uh, all responses indicate that each goal either strongly supports or somewhat supports the framework. Uh, as as a majority. The open-ended uh comments suggest protecting, protecting the natural environment within parks, providing more. ADA accessible trails, more off-street bike and pedestrian facilities, organizing volunteer cleanups, removing litter. Addressing homelessness within the parks. Increase access to school recreation facilities, providing more natural areas and concern about the impacts from. An expanding population. So at this point, we will break again for discussion and uh. Mr. Chair, I'll hand it back over to you and however you want to organize this discussion.
We'll give it another shot though, we did it with the lightning round and I'll start with Commissioner Moore, make sure I'm not going to forget this gentleman here. Some more lightning round, is it tracking in the right way? Do you feel like it's appropriately vetted through the the lens of climate and equity? And what's missing uh or anything for further exploration?
I do, I do like this one, there's again, a a a broad uh collection of of uh aspirations here. Um, uh, this one though, this this bucket feels uh vaguer to me than the last bucket and maybe that's because it's something I think about more. Um, I was kind of surprised that um. Uh, yes, there's some good ideas in here, I think goal two is very important to me, developing new parks, especially to serve the the urban ring. Um, which is, you know, more than fifty thousand people that don't have sort of urban parks. Um, you know, where there are parks that are kind of like that are in Scottsville and S-Mont, we got Doria Park and um. Uh, the other, uh, the, shoot, I'm thinking, forgetting the name now, uh, Simpson Park down in S-Mont. Um, you know, the kind that that kids go to, they're more like a community center that are that are a third place. Uh, if you're familiar with that, you know, the place that's not home and that's not work, it's a place where where communities actually gather and it 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 stitches that social fabric. Um, there's a lot in here about about, um, you know, adding more trails, uh, adding more, um. You know, bike paths, connecting those things, uh, doing it well, uh, doing it so that the people with different abilities can get there and that's all wonderful. I I think that's uh fine and good, um, but I'm I'm kind of thinking of the old, the old classic book of bowling alone. This is more like, like walking a path alone, uh, whereas I think more emphasis on on. This is more like, like Walking a Path Alone, whereas I think more emphasis on, on building these third places that nourish social connections would actually serve us much better. Places with basketball courts and spray parks and playgrounds and, and just, you know, free public places. Maybe throw in some stages for performances too, you know what I mean? And so that's the kind of, uh, the kind of thing that I'm thinking about. Just more that third place, social gathering space model of, of park construction, not just such a, there's, there's been a long emphasis on sort of like large rural donated tracts of land in Alamo County that we just, you know, bushwhack some trails and, and make some nice picnic tables. I think we could do better with, um, with the, the, the pocket parks and more urban ring parks.
Thank you for those comments. I'll move to Commissioner Murray.
Okay. Um, in terms of the lens of, of equity, I, I agree too. I think that focusing on making sure that we provide opportunities for green spaces and the, the urban areas is, is something, once again, this serve also transcends a lot of other topics. Now, how we decide, you know, where green space goes. You know, right now we have sort of a develop to protect methodology. And we have large areas along the Rivanna where they used to be forested. And so we said, okay, well, you can develop the vast majority of this forested area along the Rivanna so that you can then proffer back this tiny sliver. That seems wrong to me. We should come up with another way of doing that. So once again, not, it's kind of crosses a bunch of different lines there. In, in the rural area, we don't, while there are many parks, large parks located in the rural area, for most, for a lot of rural area residents, they depend upon what I would call sort of natural greenways or natural parks. When I go out my door, I'm going to go running in my backyard down, down the road. If that road becomes unsafe for me to use, then I no longer have a place to walk or run. Because it's not, you know, always convenient for me to hop in the car and, you know, drive 30 minutes somewhere else. So I think a very important thing here that we can do is to document the places that people are running, cycling and walking throughout the county. And there are great tools for doing this. There's Strava and there's also cell phone data that can identify where people are walking, running and cycling. And I think we need to start documenting these de facto greenways of places that people already are. So we don't destroy those places and that, so when planning decisions come before us, that we take that into account. For example, if a road, if we're going to propose to pave a gravel road, for example, we should know what the, we get the traffic count of cars on that road. We should get the, the, the traffic count of bikes and runners and walkers on that road. There's going to be a new winery or some new, you know, special use on a road. We should know how this can impact cyclists, walkers and runners. So that's an, I, I see that as an equity issue in many ways. And then, um, and it's interesting to note too, um, you had areas like Ivy that, that kind of got left in a peculiar situation because they used to be part of the growth area. And so in the comprehensive plan designation, it, it used to be when you look at old comprehensive plans, there was comprehensive plan designations for green space and Ivy. Well, when it got dropped out of the growth area, yeah, there are in the maps. Oh, there's none there now. Um, so, but when it got removed out of the, the growth areas, those comprehensive plan designations for open space and green spaces got removed as well. I think that it would make sense, a lot of counties have, um, you know, C1 and A1 zoning. I think it would make sense for, um, for Alamo County to at least have comprehensive plan designations for where we'd like to see green spaces and conservation areas in the rural area. We don't have that now. So, um, and that would sort of address, you know, the Ivy situation, I mean, like, I don't know what you do about places like Ivy. They kind of were left, they have the density of the urban area, but without all the amenities.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Commissioner Firehawk.
Thanks. I, I was, I was very glad our remote commissioner went first because I agreed with everything that he said. And that was really helpful because I don't always like to be the contrarian. I, I did feel like, yes, the, the parks chapter was the most vague. It, it read to me more like a, like a mission statement, like the staff would develop on a, like on a retreat where you talked about serve our customers better. You know, increase facilitation, accelerate planning, increase access, sustain partnerships. This is more like fodder you would see on a leadership poster. It's not specific. It, I just expect them to be doing all those things anyway, all the time. It doesn't, it doesn't rise to the level of something that needs to go on the comprehensive plan. Objective 4.3 was the only specific objective I found in that chapter. So I would like to see more specifics. I think the parks chapter needs to go back to, or the, of the con plan needs to go back to the drawing board. And then I would like to see more specific things such as, um, exploring options to connect existing developments in the urban area to parks. Evaluate the equity of park access for Alamo County communities. So we're not going to do something like a 15 minute walk in the rural area, obviously, but we could look at the equitable distribution of parks. So we, it does say that we want a countywide parks thinking, our park system, but there are definitely underserved areas of our county where, and it's true that I think there's sometimes, I've, I'm not saying Alamo does it, but some rural counties will say, well, you know, like they have the rural area, but like there's lots of, lots of residents in rural area, live on a half acre, one acre, a quarter acre. They don't have a farm that they can run around on. They literally don't have anywhere to go for a walk except that rural road. So where I live, there, there are certain rural roads that they're like our little greenway. And then, um, I'd also like to see the parks serve a role as demonstration sites. So we talk like plant native plants, everyone, and do all these things. We used to even have in, in Charlottesville at our shared recycling center, we used to have a ziruscape garden demonstration, how to garden with low water drought tolerant plants. And then, I don't know, it just disappeared, maybe people got tired of taking care of it. But it would be nice to go to a park and see like, these are the native plants of Alamo Hall. This is what you can plant, you know, just some of those educational opportunities. Cause we have a lot of people moving here from other places. And then the, um, so I don't want to rattle on all the things I think should be in the parks chapter. I just like it to go back to the drawing board, but I, I want to bring up like a little bit of a hot topic. We've had a couple of sessions about cell towers in parks and this notion that it's a park, you might get injured on the trail, we need a cell tower there. I want somebody, I would like to, the county to think through, are we saying we would like all parks to have cell towers? So that we can make an emergency call from any park in the county? Because this has been suggested and I don't know if that's really our policy or not. What is our policy on emergency response in parks? Because if it's every park should have a cell tower, I just want to know that. Uh, before we have more of those applications, because it's, you know, county owned land. And so it's a natural for cell providers to come to us and say, hey, how about a cell tower on that park site? So I'll, I'll leave that, but, um, I really would like us to use our parks for connectivity. I'm thinking of Frederick Law Olmstead and the Emerald Necklace. And I know our park staff, one of whom happens to be an accomplished landscape architect, knows all about Frederick, but I would like us to think about a connected park system. And it takes a while to build. Charlottesville, the same struggle when they first started trying to connect the dots. But over time, piece by piece, things have actually gotten more connected even in that environment. So I feel like if we, if we had a, even if it's going to be a separate project, like making a master plan to connect these natural areas in the urban ring. It, 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 it's never too late to start, but some, at some point it's going to be too late. I'll just leave it at that.
Right, thank you. So that, that was, and then we were, we were having a little sidebar here. And that, the, the term that I, that I would use, to me, it was, it was, although I appreciate the work and there was a lot of good thought, I, I do think it was a bit uninspired. And, and, and that last piece that Commissioner Firehawk is my big, my fire round is, 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 it's not a system. It's not really thinking we are as a system. And there's some great examples out there. And e- even things like, like you said, so it's a little pearl and just how do we connect these pearls? And a complicated place like Atlanta, Georgia, has been doing an amazing job of their connecting parks, you know, with their, with their belt, Beltway. Trail system and it's phenomenal. And if you haven't, you know, my, my son went to school there. So we would go every, you know, every so often and every time there was another section built and something else was connected. So, so, you know, whether it's you going back to the drawing board or not, but I do think getting the perspective of a system and, and, and not just having the vision, because the vision's great, but that's, that's what the, the Beltway project did is not just the vision, but how you begin to implement it in a, in a realistic manner is, is key. So that's my big lightning round. Commissioner Missile?
Sure. Thank you. That was actually helpful. Thank you. So a couple of things, one, I may have a slightly different viewpoint on this than some of others might. To me, I'm trying to keep this lightning.
And that's gone, Commissioner Missile. I, I think we're just giving comments.
Okay, all right. In that case.
Now what have you done?
No, but I would say that for me, it was less about, I mean, it, it vague to me, using the word vague, and I understand where you're coming from, is sort of a negative connotation. When I first read this, I realized, I, what I saw was that was, first of all, we're all very passionate about this. And I think partly because we're grateful to live in a community that has an amazing parks and recreation resource. So how, you know, the question that was remaining for me was this question of three letters, how? Right? These are great goals. They're, they're in some cases vague, but I was sort of wondering the, okay, what's next? We will enhance and update existing parks, how? Right? And, and sort of dial down just a little bit. So this is a great first cut. And it captures many of the different areas. I'm just sort of craving that extra level of detail that may still come and what I would expect would come. So, you know, we talked about quality of life. Obviously this is key to the quality of life of Alamo Hall and continuing to do this is critically important. I would say inventory and priorities. They came up here, just making sure, you know, I keep saying the word inventory, but what do we currently have? What are our priorities? And it's mentioned in here as well. Leveraging partnerships and regional, um, can't read my handwriting, coordination. So thinking that, that, you know, what are those opportunities to, to take the trails that are currently in place and make them better, right? How can we expand those? Maintenance standards I think are really key, really important. And what is, what is our standard of care? What are our expectations around maintenance? Are we meeting those expectations? Are we falling short? If we're falling short, and I don't know that to be a fact, but if we are, should we be really focusing on expanding before we're ready to be happy with the standard of care we currently have? And where is that balance? And then funding was managed in here. So funding that supports that standard of care and how that can be measured and, and utilized. And I think those are my key areas.
Commissioner Bivins.
Thank you and thank you, everyone. This has been very helpful. So I'm going to drill down in particularly in a, and I think a very different sense. And most of you have heard me sort of rattle on about, I don't care anymore about whether or not we put another park in the rural area. I don't care. What I do care about is that there's been a couple of missed opportunities from the county. We built the wonderful library in Croze. We put a library on Ryle Road and there is not a third space like Commissioner Moore said. I can go to the library, but if I wanted to take a time and take a book outside and have a conversation, Croze is a little bit better because it's using, it has access to the park that's connected to the church on Tabard Street. But you'd be hard for us to do that at the, at the library on Ryle Road. And so there are these natural places that the county owns, that the county creates, that those would be wonderful places to have a green pocket park. So that a family could go to the library and do something else there as opposed to the asphalt we have. So what I would like to see and what I was hoping to see is like, how do we redirect? And how do we support those areas which are in our community that are park deserts?
Yeah, that's a great point.
So would it not be possible for the county to purchase the green spot that remains and stone field? And you know what? There's a lot of people there. We're going to put a greens, we're going to put a pocket park here. Perhaps you know where that is. It's sort of right next to something called Burger Bock, I believe. Which is an odd thing that you have that kind of, now it was Berger Park. I might understand that, but Burger Bock, it doesn't even make any sense to me. It's one of those things that just makes my head go, I don't understand it. So if we could have the county purchase that land and say, we're going to put a park there. When they redo the piece that we just saw about, uh, uh, Fashion Square, wouldn't it be interesting, and I'm not going to get in trouble, Counselor, but wouldn't it be interesting if Home Depot and the gentleman at the other end, I can't, Mr. Hued, said, you know what, Kenny? We'll give you this space here. You develop that into a park. So not only do we have a shopping center, but we also have a green space there. And these are the natural areas that people come and let's give them something else to do besides, or let's give them something to do while they do something else. And so for me, when I, when I look at some of the important places that are the places that I kind of, that I sort of groove on that are not just urban places, because you can't, we are not an urban place. When I look at places like us, I see these green spaces that are sort of seasoned through the population places. And we don't have that. And I think that's what we need to have. If we start talking about some of the things about equity, if we start talking about what's a resilient community, that we start thinking about where does it make sense for us to have park space that enhances what people do in the normal course of their business. I would like to get a kid, I would also try and say, can we stop calling biscuit park run, uh, future park? It is clearly not a future park. It is clear, it is clearly part of it is being used right now. And so it's just in the inventory. It's in our inventory. It's not a future park. There's just, you know, Arrowhead thing down 29th South is a future park, but that's not. So, so the whole idea, what I would have liked to have seen is an admission that we've got all of this green space, but you know, for the next few years, we're going to talk about those places which are underserved. And those places which make a difference on how we perceive ourselves as a unified community. And that to me is what's missing here. Plus, I mean, we also recognize this is just a bit of a parenthesis or a bracket chair. Most of the big land spaces we have were donated to the, to the county. The county did not go out and inquire these places. They were gifts. And I don't have a problem with that. I think that's really brilliant that people want to do that. But so the planning that we're, that we're concerned with didn't happen because it was a gift. You know, why do I have too many ties at Christmas? Because everybody thought I needed to have a tie. I would have preferred to have something else, but not a tie. And so we also don't have what I would say is a public works department. And so I have no idea whether or not the staff that's in the, and that's in Parks and Rec could actually do some of this. What can they do with the, with the FTEs and the budget that they have today? To come back to what you say, what's possible? Because I don't know, or what I've seen, they're all very clever people, but I don't know that they can do all this stuff. And I don't know if the county is, has the ability to transfer funds to them to get some of this stuff done. But I do think they could transfer some funds to have some parks in the developed area part of the county. I think that would be a very cool thing and a strong signal.
Commissioner Missile?
Yeah, could I just build off just a couple of things that you mentioned, which really resonated? One is that idea of scale. And maybe my mind, when we talk about Parks and Rec, my mind goes to big, larger scale. Like how can we interconnections of, you know, mile long trails, et cetera, et cetera. But I think you nailed a really important aspect, which is thinking about all scales of these, right? Which I know our staff is doing. The other thing is just to mention, um, because I think one of our questions was, is it aligned with the equitable and resilient community? I think a thriving and prosperous community, that piece of it, which is tied to again, economic development, thinking about development models that incorporate into it, green space, like, you know, a neighborhood model district, which has a 20% requirement, those kinds of things. But also other areas that might be more commercial and how that might be included. Thanks.
If I could come alongside both these gentlemen and perhaps, first of all, the Atlanta probably is a Beltline. Someplace else. So the points that we've been making, and I, and if we really want to talk about equality of use of these kinds of spaces, this is a, this is a probably one of the simplest things that we can tackle as a community to provide some equality of use. I think we can, we can, we can all see that we don't have that equality throughout the county of access. If you don't, if you're not mobile, if you don't have a car, you're not going to get to some places. And so tying the, those resources, and they could be very small. And I, and I agree, we can't just think about these as the big parks, but what are the little parks? And this was the beautiful thing about that belt line or the really inspiring thing and transformational thing about the Beltline project is that it connects all of these things that we just talked about, economic development, transportation, park systems and equity. So it, it takes all of that into account into a system. Some of them are small parks. Some of them are business districts that, that are being connected. Some of them are rails to trails that were converted. Uh, and it all creates a system. And now what you're seeing is that within that system, economic development is happening because there are a lot of people that are moving. So hey, let's put a coffee shop. Let's put a restaurant. Let's put a, a store. Let's put a bike shop. And all of these things are popping up along the way in the fabric that's being created. So yeah, and thinking about it more as a fabric, multi-dimensional, not just parks and wrecks. Think about transportation because you can create, people can move through the, through these systems. So, and that's the piece that I, and I didn't mean say, you know, to me it was a bit uninspiring because I think it can be more and we can be thinking beyond and, and even benchmark, look at some great examples that are out there that the communities have done. And we could do it here. I mean, we already have a lot of great infrastructure from, from the sense of parks. And we don't think of it as infrastructure, but it is. And so, so I think we have a great head start here in, in Alamo County. And we can certainly build and do something truly unique and then perhaps others will want to emulate.
Arizona, I just wanted to bounce off that last comment or next to last comment made as well. Um, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold one second. I'm going to Commissioner Firehawk. She's been waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry. It wasn't on the screen. I couldn't tell.
Yeah, no worries.
I'll try to be quick. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, plus one, what Julian was saying. Um, because you can do, you can have a lot of wonderful experience, even in a small intimate park and just, um, also I was just thinking about the fact that it's actually true that exposure of 20 minutes to green space per day actually raises your IQ, improves your heart rate, all kinds of things. So that access is so important. But I also want to encourage us to think about all the, the creative financing ideas that are out there to fund parks and rec. So this notion that we're going to get a better park system by developers donating, I think it was referred to as slivers or the unusable part of their development. One of the challenges is when people give us green space or top line of their development. The other thing we hear is, well, I hope no one comes in there from the neighborhood next door. And I hope they're not going to, that subdivision next door doesn't think that's their park because that's our park, you know? And so it, it doesn't create a park network doing that. And, um, there, I'll just throw out a couple of examples. So there's the Land and Water Conservation Fund that has funded some parks in this area in the past. That there's more money in that fund now than there ever was before. Um, there's also bonding. We put bonds forward for schools. Why not a public bond to acquire parkland? Uh, what are we going to do with all this AAA rating if not take advantage of our ability to borrow at low interest rates relatively? And then some localities also take a portion of their tourism tax, you know, from restaurants and whatever, and put it into green space. Because the green of the community is a, a very important reason why people want to come here. So I just want us to maybe either say something about using more creative financing for the county to invest itself. Because you're exactly right. Uh, there's so many studies, even just daylighting an urban creek makes people want to live in the business and rent the business next door. And then some other business opens up and then somebody puts a cafe there and so on and so forth. They pay, they end up paying for themselves 10 times over.
Commissioner Moore, then I want to bring the phone.
Yes, uh, thank you. And then really I was just echoing what, uh, both Commissioner Firehawk and Commissioner Arizona just kind of referred to how these, um, uh, systems of, of, um, you know, park space or, or simple, uh, daylighting of streams even, um, can spur more economic activity. And just to highlight that, that in the county's, um, uh, engagement, uh, responses that, you know, things like having more local retail and, and more, uh, you know, food stores nearby was, was right up there after more park and open space. So I think that's a great sort of confidence.
Right. And, yeah.
So, and, and this is more of a, just at one point, Mr. Kluge, Mr. John Kluge bought up a lot of rails, rail paths in Southern, in Southern Albemarle. And I just wonder what's happened with them. And I don't think you're going to answer that now. But that was one of the things that he did during his life here is that he purchased some of the, some of the rails to turn them into rail trails. And so if that still exists, and if there's an opportunity for, for whoever owns those now, then that would give you the kind of network in Southern Albemarle that would just be brilliant. That would just be brilliant.
There are some pathways potential.
Yeah. One more thing, Commissioner Murray?
Yeah. I mean, this, this borders on action, not an objective, but, um, I also wanted to mention, I think we are, there's a missed opportunity with transfer development rights. And it's been discussed in the past. Um, it's been used in other places like Arlington, for example, to, to create and improve parks. Um, they got, uh, 6.6 million, um, for a park in Arlington in, in 2011 by using transfer development rights. So I think when we talk about the challenges, particularly in our urban area of trying to get green spaces, that's a tool that we could be using that has been used successfully in Virginia. Um, um, another thing that some of the things that haven't been mentioned yet, I think, um, there's been a lot of talking, the, the Natural Heritage Committee that really we need a, um, an invasive species management plan for parks. And I think that that's something that needs to be in here somewhere too. Although I understand it could be nestled under one of those objective items. Another thing, um, we, we do have many, um, rare species and habitats in the county, um, that don't occur anywhere else. So it's, it's very positive in one sense that we, these occurrences do occur in our county parks. But it's also a responsibility in the sense that if we have these occurrences, we need to make sure that we have a plan to protect them from impacts. So, um, that'd be another aspect I'd like to see in here.
It's been a, a rich conversation. Yeah. I hope you've taken quite a bit away. I'm not going to repeat what others have said. But I do want to make sure there's a nod to safety and security somewhere in there. And, um, I didn't see those words anywhere as I was reading through safe or secure. It kind of goes back to it. Commissioner Firehawk had brought up about self-service, for example, right? Are you safe or secure if you don't have a signal, right? In a park, can you buy yourself? But, uh, starting to think about those kinds of things is the only thing I might add. Uh, some of the things that bubbled to, bubbled up to the top in this conversation that I've jotted down are specificity, right? Like quantifying metrics or is it getting more specific? Um, urban parks and tying together social threads, uh, documentation was out there where we can see park deserts. And I think the term you used, uh, Commissioner Murray was a de facto greenways. Um, creative financing and a host of other things. But those are some of the things that bubbled to the top. So, um, with that, I think we can see if we can knock out this last one. It'll take a break and move into the public hearings. So.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Claiborne. So moving on to, uh, historic scenic and cultural resources. Um, protecting historic scenic and cultural resources plays a vital role in maintaining, preserving the local character that's valued by both residents and visitors of Albemarle County. Protection effort requires identification of individual resources and educating the public about those resources. Incentives and protection measures are required for resource preservation. These resources also offer an opportunity for a more inclusive history by sharing narratives that represent a more broad and diverse range of community members. There is also an opportunity to protect environmental aspects of scenic resources such as forests, hillsides and streams. Additionally, preservation and adaptive reuse conserves building materials along the subject of, uh, climate action. The subject also overlaps other planned topics such as economic development, environmental stewardship and land use. Community input on this topic includes identifying historic and cultural resources, recognizing African-American and historic free town communities, collaborating with indigenous groups, utilizing educational opportunities for historic resources, leveraging tourism, expanding the historic marker program, continued adaptive reuse of historic buildings, especially within the rural area and crossroads communities, increasing preservation incentives, adopting regulations for protection and preserving scenic resources and improving the county lighting ordinance to protect dark skies, which has obviously been discussed earlier this evening. So moving on to the goals, goal one is to recognize, celebrate and increase the awareness of the range of contributing historic, cultural and scenic resources. Objectives include identifying and documenting significant resources, sharing stories and uplifting undertold narratives, which includes the local historic marker program and also identifying and protecting the threats to these resources. Goal two regards the protection of historic scenic and natural resources while considering the future trajectory of development within the county. Objectives include improved preservation and protection of resources by landowners and businesses, the preservation and adaptive reuse of historic and cultural resources, and cultivating partnerships in support of preserving and protecting these resources. Goal three targets opportunities for all community members to access and enjoy these historic scenic and cultural resources. Objectives include access to these resources and increased awareness, protection of view sheds and landscapes and protection of dark skies. Goal four seeks attractive and scenic entrance corridors as well as prominent roadways that support in the environment and the county's unique sense of place. Objectives include protecting the design quality of entrance corridors, utilizing sustainable building materials and increasing the number of designated scenic roads. The key themes carried over from the 2015 comp plan include identifying and recognizing the value of historic resources, sharing resource information and protecting historic scenic and cultural resources, dark skies, scenic roadways and entrance corridors. New updates include support, greater support for narratives and resources of historically underrepresented groups, energy efficient upgrades with adaptive reuse and also proactively identifying resources. Our community input, uh, for this particular survey indicated a more mixed response for whether or not these goals, uh, did or did not support the framework. And there was a roughly even split among these choices, whereas with the previous topics, there was a majority of support that indicated either A or B for support strongly or somewhat. Open-ended input included better dark skies protection, establishing a preservation ordinance, utilizing informative videos, expanding commercial tax base while protecting resources, utilizing transit connections, preventing vandalism and concern about locations that are already diminished by development such as Croze. Again, at this point, we will pause to discuss how well these goals align with the framework and what is missing from the draft goals and objectives.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holt. I'll go to Commissioner Moore.
Man, I gotta start off again.
I don't want to forget you.
Um, I think as far as a, a, a equity lens, um, this, this does very well, uh, particularly the parts about, you know, uh, uh, finding, taking inventory, collecting the stories of, 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 um, historically marginalized groups in Alamo County. You know, I'm reminded of this old, um, Rekaiser quote that, you know, the universe is made of stories, not atoms. And, uh, the stories we tell, um, are the ones that are going to sort of create the future we want. And how we remember it. So that's, that's kind of my, my opening gambit. But, um, yeah, I'm buoyed by the idea of taking inventory. Uh, I, I guess I feel like again, it was, um, some of the goals feel like, are we, are we sort of, it's not starting from, uh, from step one. There's some things that are here and there's a few specifics. Uh, I, I think one thing, sorry, are we doing lightning round or is comments? Cause I think I was pretty bad at setting a precedent last time.
No, let's go ahead. We're going to finish.
All right. All right. Right. Um, the, uh, a, a couple of things I, I, I thought might be missing. Uh, one, uh, there's a lot in here about preservation and how to kind of like make sites, uh, good for interpretive use and visitors and that sort of thing. I would like to see more about media presentations, uh, to make them more broadly accessible. Um, uh, that obviously is close to home. If you know what I do for a living. Uh, but, um, you know, whether it's video or, or, or podcast or, or otherwise, there's a lot that can be done to tell those stories, uh, and reach far more people than just, uh, an interpretive site on Saturday afternoons. The other thing, and I don't know where this might fit in and it's might be completely out of left field. So I apologize for, for that. But, um, I don't know where else it might fit except under cultural resources, uh, is sort of, uh, what do we do with the county's current arts and cultural resources? You know, the musicians and the performers and the, and the, the, um, the, the carriers of culture today, uh, doing, you know, with the, the free concerts and the festivals. And, and I don't know if we just cede that to the city. Um, but I don't see anything in there about kind of today's culture bearers. So that was the, the two things I thought might be missing.
All right. Thank you. Great comments. Uh, go to, uh, Commissioner Murray for your comments.
Yes, although it's kind of mentioned, um, I think there should be explicit mention, um, of the free towns and African-American communities in the rural area and, and making sure that, um, that we have some action items about, um, recognizing those communities and, and protecting them. That, that'd be my number one recommend.
Is that it?
For now.
Okay. All right. Sure. You can put it all on the table now. We're going around. Okay. Commissioner Firehawk.
Okay. Um, I'll just make it some brief comments. Um, I just, this is more of a, just a, maybe a editing thing, but objective 4.1, that seemed like two totally different ideas about entrance quarters and then some other stuff. So I think that just needs to be split into two separate objectives. You guys could look at that later. I, I know that, uh, having a historic preservation ordinance seems to be controversial for our county. And yet I sit on the, I represent as liaison to the stroke preservation committee. You know, we have this report where we just talk about what was demolished or what was documented. And we tried to control someone before it was demolished. There are some success stories. I want to just be negative Nellie. Uh, where we got someone to actually put the money in and restore it, but we just can't depend on the kindness of strangers. So I would like us to, if people are feeling namby pamby, then maybe we can say, investigate legal tools for historic preservation and leave it at that. And then whether or not we get to an ordinance as an action item is different. Or do we want to say pursue adopting a preservation ordinance? Um, and then there's, we don't have to be, you know, say what that would look like, but something that actually allows someone to get a permit. We have permit for demolition, but that just, you still get the permit generally. I mean, you just like, if you want to demolish a structure, you, you tell the county and they, you pay a fee and then you demolish it. And then I also, I don't know if this is adequately, um, um, expressed. So I'm not sure if it is or not. I'll just throw it out there and then somebody else can be the judge. But, um, uh, we talked about like stories and types and people that are underrepresented, but I also think there's underrepresented areas of the county. Um, so I'll, and I'll even just throw this out as an example, Howardsville where I live. I think there's a notion that Howardsville is washed away by Hurricane Camille and there's nothing left. And it's true. We lost our hotel. The post, we don't have a post office, the train station, uh, at the lawyer's office, the gas station, we could go on. But there's a lot of people who still live there and identify as Howardsville. Everyone basically is above the hundred year flood plain, uh, above the hundred year flood level. So, um, if you go, there's a series of boards out in the hallway and it talks about Batesville, talks about all these communities and Howardsville is just not there. It's like, I, you know, I think it would be news to everyone living there that they're not there anymore. So there's a lot of stories. There's national register places down there. There's, uh, the Howard's, the, the, the first bank of Alamo County is located there. There's a whole lot of history there. Um, and that's just an, one example of an underrepresented area. You talked about the free towns, but we've kind of lost some of our places. There's a dot on the map for the comp plan that says Howardsville is there, but there, it's not, we're not telling that story anymore. Um, and we do have a mixed, uh, community of different races down there. So including indigenous people even from Monakin. So I would just like to us to think about whatever those areas are of the county that have not been fully represented in the stories that have been told or, um, or just recognizing that they're still there. They're still vibrant community, even if it's not, you know, a town per se.
What's the name of that community again?
Howardsville.
Howardsville. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Missile?
Sure. Thank you. Um, appreciate all the comments and staff's work on this. Just a couple of thoughts. One, well, more than two. Um, one is, you know, we, we've talked a lot about when we talk about natural resources and we've talked about, um, parks and recreation. I think we've, we are doing a lot and maybe it's just me, but we're doing a lot of forward thinking. What do we do now? How do we move this forward? And it really strikes me that conversations about historic resources is really about legacy. And it really strikes me that conversations about historic resources is really about legacy too. It's also about obviously looking backwards and I think that's one of the amazingly rich things about our area. Among other things, but I I have always been surprised that we don't have a historic preservation ordinance. And, you know, one gentleman, Alex Struminger from Batesville sent a note to all of us and he recommended in there the need for an office of historic preservation, you know, that 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 extent. I would say that shifting to maybe some areas that were or could be maybe as supplemented in here. One is is cataloging and documenting what we currently have. The second is the acknowledgement that many of our historic resources were built by enslaved labor. And there, you know, the the we, the connections to the descendants of enslaved communities is becoming more and more robust here through the university, through the Gibbons Project at the university. And I think there's a repository of information that can benefit a lot of folks. And when you think regionally about Alba Maro County, many of the enslaved I'm learning worked in many of the different areas and traveled within those areas. So acknowledging that as part of our history and honestly is part of our legacy, I think is important. And then I guess lastly, the Department of Historic Resources. And this is tied a little bit to education, but thinking about historic tax credits. And as you know, people think about, I've got this great historic, you know, home or whatever it is. Partnering with the with the D H R and thinking about ways to leverage those things in a similar way to what we've talked about. And the last thing I'll say is a wordsmithing thing. And as we've gone through each of these three, I've been struck by the wording of the goals. And again, this is just wordsmithing for your consideration. But when you looked at the goals in natural resources, or I'm sorry, Parks and Rec. Every one of the goals said Almaral County will enhance, Almaral County will utilize, Almaral County will fund. And the other two had some interesting wording, starting with the natural resources, Almaral County will have natural waters. And then another one, Almaral County will have opportunities for all community members to access and enjoy local historic scenic and cultural resource. Just, it's not worded to me like a goal as much as it is a, we'll have these things, but it needs to be more of a we will promote these things or we will make, yeah, make, take measures to achieve these things, something like that. Thank you.
I'll just plus one to historic tax credit. That was one of my comments, so. I don't know, maybe we can't over emphasize this, so I'm also gonna gonna start talking about the historic ordinance or some kind of policy statement. Because if we are going to emphasize historic preservation as a goal, then how are we actually going to achieve that? So there's got to be some policy and I I'm going for one, I'm going to advocate for an ordinance. And I'm going to give a different, I don't disagree with with your your representation of that and that is somewhat. You know, looking in the past, I think it's what you said, but I'm going to give it a different lens. Actually, I think it's also forward looking and 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 how it's forward looking is that if you look at most of the, and we talk about adaptive reuse in this chapter here as well. Most of the adaptive reach for most, a lot of the adaptive reuse is happening around the country happens because they can't knock it down.
Yeah.
So it's it's having those ordinances that that enable people to have to think creatively, how am I going to reuse this structure? And so I would, it doesn't happen without those those policies. So I really encourage the county to embrace and adopt a historic preservation ordinance. Last one, Commissioner Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues. This has been quite refreshing and also sort of enjoyable. And sort of coming along, one thing, so if I could come along, my sister Karen on four point one, I I'm just gonna say, what does four point one mean? Because, you know, everybody knows that I have this wrestle with the A R B, you know, one day, which is gonna be a wrestle match between them. Because I'm still trying to figure out what are the vent, what's the sort of the nexus, what's the Venn diagram between them, us and the B O S? And at some point, somebody will take me aside, maybe the director will take me aside and and tell me why why that's so. And so, because when I looked at that, my thing is, why wouldn't we want all of Alba Marl's built environment to be encouraged in the same way? Why? Why am I concerned about a road that somebody's on if the traffic's flowing well for fifteen to twenty minutes? I don't care what they think as they're driving through here because there aren't very many ways for people to drive through here. It's not like I have a lot of options. I come up twenty nine, I go up sixty four, maybe I can take twenty or two thirty one to Gordonsville. But for the most of it, there are very few ways to get people through here someplace else. We, Danville and Lynchburg can call us all the bad names for us not having to put a a around a super highway around us, but I'm glad we didn't, they're glad, they're mad we didn't. But so the thing is, sort of what is our built environment? Our built environment is not about a road. You know, our built environment is about what is the culture that we feel is appropriate for when we look at the complete, the completeness of who we are. Which is why I'm going to come to something else. So I really here thought that this is a place where the inventory of county and school owned buildings should be looked at to say, how do we do? When I think about Woolen Mills, Woolen Mills would not have been saved. But for some people thinking, hey, this is gonna be a good place for, you know, some tech guys and some tech gals to come in and do what they're doing here. So why aren't we asking the county to have an inventory of county buildings and county schools to do the same thing? We all know what the wrestling match that took place in in Esmont, in the school in Esmont.
Yes.
About what are we going to do? Are we gonna knock it down? Are we reuse it? Are we gonna do something else? You know, I can't, the stress for why I can't remember the name of that. And they came to a decision to make this a place that was going to integrate back into that community there. They could have knocked it down if they'd done the other thing. And so the whole idea is asking our county and our school system to wrestle with their inventory of of buildings to see what the next lives of those things can be, I think would be helpful. I also just used two other things. Remember, I brought it to our attention that some of the six hundred roads, particularly the one going from Scottsville through Batesville over to two fifty over the mountain, that's a historic road. That is a historic road that is just as important of telling our story about who we were. And so it's those kinds of bits that I think while I get we're talking about buildings and you know, everybody all heard my my concern and my annoyance about about some of the buildings, particularly west of town and in Greensville, that's not, that's not whatever the place is over there and be and be through and and sort of the history that goes along with it, but the history that doesn't get spoken about. About those those buildings out there, but we, huh? Greenwood, thank you, in Greenwood. But here are things which we can in fact tell stories about. This is how our community evolved from the river over to the mountain and back again, and what that meant for the economy and what that meant for businesses here, which also then goes to my, the last thing, and I'll be quiet, Chair, on this, I believe. Is that also it goes to what are we preserving? And this goes back to my steep slopes thing. Let's preserve the things that are real. Let's not preserve a slope just because I say it's a slope, but let's let's preserve the slope because the slope has something to do with the characteristics of our community. And they tell a story because we will remember, we will remember that when the government put the road on the top of the blue, what we now call the Blue Ridge Mountains, they gutted communities. They gutted people who had been living up in the hills and up in the mountains of the Blue Ridge Mountains for a hundred years. Yeah, we got a nice road that goes through there. I I'm not saying it's not a nice road. If you're a motorcycle rider, you want to be careful. But but I want to say to you, that's the kind of story. And that's the kind of decision that we ought to be making so that we preserve people's resources. We talk about what are we preserving? What are we helping to tell? What's the equity that's being given to the next group of people who come through up here? That's also by preserving things which we're going to say, we're going to hands off on that. We're gonna help you, we're gonna help you improve it, but we're not going to come and destroy it. So what's the real slope? What's the fake slope? And what's the area of our communities that has stories that need to be preserved and told through?
Commissioner Firehawk and Commissioner Murray?
I was just gonna add plus one on those dark roads and also just to note that, oh, gosh, it must have been like eighteen or nineteen years ago, I worked with the Thomas Jefferson Plan District Commission on a heritage tourism project and we did talk to Professor Emeritus Edward Lay about his work on historic roads and we pulled all that together into a map. Which was given to the Planning District Commission. So I think that works is still out there and I think it's just some of this is, you know, maybe just bringing it forward, bubbling it up, making it prominent on our website, but. Yeah, I think I just think a whole, there could be a whole lot of high tech things we could do with apps and things for people to follow historic roads and tell stories and. And and yes, I know, I like the idea of having an office of historic preservation. We have some great staff, but they don't have enough resources. But these kind of ideas are grant fundable for sure.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I'll just mention in in twenty nineteen, Loudoun County won an Emmy for their efforts. A documentary they made about their efforts to save gravel roads in their county. And and here we can't seem to eliminate them fast enough. So I think that there are opportunities to look at, once again, these things transcend different sections. I mean, maybe this goes in transportation, I don't know, but there's there's an aspect of of historic qualities to this, to environmental resources, to transportation. But I think one of the big themes here is that I think historic resources come in all shapes and sizes. We've gotten stuck in this notion that protecting historic properties is protecting these grand estates. But sometimes it's not a grand estate, you know, sometimes it's a little tiny house that is important to a community. Sometimes it is that gravel road winding through the countryside. I mean, that said, I'm, I continue to be disappointed in our county that, you know, I mean, Monticello is great. But I mean, you know, Teddy Roosevelt's house was also in Almaral County. And yet most people don't even know it was there. And 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 I don't know why we, you know.
Still there.
Well, it's still there. Yeah.
It's still there, folks.
Still there, sorry, for using the past tense. But but it was also the the last place that, one of the last documented places that the passenger pigeon was seen in in America. So it's it's not only a a site of historic importance, but also a a site of important natural history. So just I think we're not doing enough to broaden our concept of what is historic Almaral County and and I don't know what we can do to push some of these places along if there's funding streams or so forth, but it just seems like there's some missed opportunities and and how narrow we're viewing what is historic.
I'll just add a couple of things before we do the last call and we still have a lot on our docket to get through tonight. Now, this notion about documenting and just being aware of what we have. I think a lot of times we use the word historic, you think of circa eighteen sixty or something like that. But if you go to, you know, the National Register of Historic Places and looking under age and integrity, it's really only fifty years old, right? So that's like nineteen seventy two, nineteen seventy three. That's not circa eighteen sixty, right? And so I bet if you started to document the inventory that you have, you have more properties than not, you know, within the county that could be historic, so. With that, I'll see if anybody else has any last will and testaments before we take a break and finish the rest.
Oh, yes, just very brief, if I'm gonna talk about the next steps in AC forty four, yeah. So looking forward, the next work session will be on the topics of housing and economic development. That will be November fourteenth. And then that will be followed by land use, transportation and community facilities on December nineteenth. Obviously, there's a lot of interest around land use and particularly the designation of the development areas and the rural areas and how staff is going to address the rural areas. So we just want to ensure everybody that we will thoroughly address both the development areas and the rural areas. And as mentioned earlier, we are exploring the possibility of either giving the rural area its own chapter or having the rural area and development areas as two separate sections within the same land use chapter. Either way, we're not going to short shrift that. And looking forward, the action steps for these goals and objectives will be drafted and shared next year in phase three. So some of the discussion tonight kind of centered on, you know, how do we implement? What are the action steps? So we will be diving into those details next year. Applicable metrics will be incorporated into the plan and in early twenty twenty four, we will hold a board work session on all goals and objectives with a follow up planning commission work session prior to finalizing the goals and objectives. So you all will get one more crack at it at that point. Phase three begins in the spring of next year with action steps to implement the goals and objectives, along with prioritizing plan recommendations and incorporating metrics for tracking success. So stuff to look forward to. Thank you.
All right.
I have a quick process question that I, why is the twenty twenty four schedule having the board work session and then a follow up with the planning commission if we are the advisors to the board?
So, well, we wanted to take all the feedback that we went with to to that you've already given feedback on and the community is going to continue giving feedback on. Let the board see that. And then we wanted to make sure that you all had one final opportunity to look at that again before we moved on to the next phase. Now, obviously, none of this gets finally approved until the end. So if in that last section, once you get to see how all of these goals and objectives have come together throughout these phases, you'll get another look at it and you can give more feedback if we need to make any more adjustments.
So then we go back to the board again, right?
Well, it would go back to the board in the, when we finalize the plan overall. So, yes.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, yes.
Quick question, Steph. In terms of, can you talk a little bit about the community engagement? And I mean, we, you know, we were looking at these and I understand that it's still in process. It's, that's my understanding. But, you know, we saw eleven participants, nine respondents, ten respondents, so. Which is kind of meaningless, right? At that level, so so what are we doing to expand? You know, particularly these areas where we're talking, I mean, on all of these, we're talking about equity and resiliency and how are we, how how are we expanding and making sure that we're capturing as broad a perspective of of the population as possible?
Yeah, sure. I'll speak of some of the ways we're trying to address that. So we've had these series of community conversations and engagement activities. We're relying on our working group to kind of act as community ambassadors and go out to people they know and reach out to different, you know, demographics and and try to have conversations with those folks. I will say there has been a trend where our questionnaire responses are have been trending downwards for some of these sections. We had over five hundred responses, I believe, in the step one earlier this year. So that's when we were introducing these plan topics. It was sort of new. We had a high response rate. I think some of the community members are becoming kind of familiar with this content and they maybe don't feel the quite the same sense of urgency to respond. But we are exploring new ways of engaging people. We will continue to do that in phase three next year. And I I would expect that there's going to be a higher level of public interest once we get into the action steps. Tori or Kevin, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything about engagement.
I'll just add that these low numbers, we we are, we just opened these and that's why we're keeping them open for the rest of this, essentially the rest of the calendar year. And we'll keep going out to the community, promoting these through social media, working with our community gate, public engagement team to keep promoting it. That's one of the reasons why we want to come back to you at the end so that you can see all the comments that you have. But they, all these surveys will remain open for essentially the rest of the calendar year.
And they're both online and and hard and paper?
No, we're not doing paper.
Yeah, we we did some paper surveys, the previous ones, and people would scan them and send them in. We found it was more efficient to do it online, so we've we've got paper flyers that we are utilizing with the Q R code on it.
And absolutely, it is more efficient and certainly it's more expected these days. Although from a recent survey from the N P L Tech and some of the transportation studies that they were doing and and plans that they're working on, they did some surveys and and they had demographics on the respondents. And it was very interesting because the online respondents were pretty much all white and I was surprised on how. Were pretty much all white and I was surprised on how high of an economic level they were. And so. Pretty homogeneous. And so, so I would encourage you to think of other ways, but not just the online. And perhaps when you're, when you go and, and do some of your pop-ups in different areas, have some kind of paper method that they can respond to. Maybe some of these key.
Okay.
Uh, that's probably where you're getting some of the other. Population, demographics in the population. I would, I would venture to guess that was true for the NPL Tech, uh, some of the studies that they were doing. So just think about that and how, how we can get.
Noted. Thanks.
It's gonna be a homecoming game at Western Admiral. Just saying, be nice to you guys there.
I'll just add one more point to that because Commissioner Missile and I were kind of laughing at the number of respondents. We were like, oh, that's, that's single digits. Um, is there a way to maybe just have two or three questions at a time, like bite-sized chunks? I'm not sure how long the survey is, but you pull somebody aside, can you answer these two questions for me? Maybe that starts to expand the pool, right? So election day is in November, that might be a good spot. Can't buy the polls perhaps, grab a couple of folks, so. But I understand it's noted, but just wanted to uh flag that. I'm glad Commissioner Carazana did. So with that, let's take a recess for, can we do eight minutes? This at 8:20ish, be back. Maybe we get out of here before midnight tonight.
That's not right.
No, that clock's not right. Call us back into order at 8:22. Um, I should have my paper in front of me. We will be doing the first of two public hearings tonight. The first is ZTA 2023-00004 and STA 2023-00002. CDD fee restructuring. And we have Dave Shiflett and Amelia McCully with us today. So I'll turn it over to our staff. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Dave Shiflett, Assistant Director of Administration for Community Development. And Amelia McCully, Special Projects Manager for Community Development. And also with us are our partners from the Berkeley Group, Chris Musso and Darren Coffey. So this evening we'll start by providing some background with the goals for this project as well as a summary of uh progress to date. Uh, we'll also share um updates since this was before the commission on July 11th of this year. Uh, then we'll go over a summary of the changes proposed with these ordinance amendments. Um, and the proposed zoning text and subdivision text amendments are before the commission this evening for action. Uh, the other code sections proposed for amendment are shared uh as for information and context. And then lastly, we'll wrap up with next steps for the project and any questions from the commission. Apologies. Is that better? Okay, this project serves several key purposes as well as being an important step towards implementation of our new community development system. Uh, known as enterprise permitting and licensing or EPL. Uh, this is the permanent application tracking platform that will eventually replace County View, our current system. The key themes in the fee restructuring project are the simplifying and consolidating fees. Uh, the fees will move from 312 separate fees currently in six separate chapter codes into one. With staff's recommended fee schedule, we will then have 154 total fees, which is over a 50% reduction in the number of fees we have currently. Um, the unified fee schedule is found in attachment five for your reference. As some of you may recall from July 11th commission meeting, we engaged with the Berkeley Group on this effort. Um, and. The Berkeley Group is a Virginia-based consulting firm who works with cities, counties, towns on local government policies and regulations. Um, they examined the current fee schedule structure and compared it with seven peer localities in the Commonwealth. Um, the Berkeley Group recommended changes to our fee schedule based on that evaluation and best practices. Uh, the scope of the project did not include an analysis of charges for fees. Uh, we went with the intent to maintain level revenues. This was a fairly rigorous process to ma- um, to maintain. Uh, it involved substantial modeling, data modeling and projections with single-family residential building fees. Um, a major focus was of course benchmark marking and comparing the fee structures. The overall goal, however, was simplifying and streamlining our fee schedule based on these best practices. Throughout this project, we engaged with major stakeholder groups directly and the community through Engage Alamo. Um, for the best practices, Berkeley Group's research resulted in finding these to be. Um, to keep fees simple and predictable and bundle fees were practical. Uh, round fees up or down and make the fee schedule readily, readily available in one location. We believe that the provoked, proposed new unified fee schedule in attachment five follows these best practices. Um, and for some updates, uh, we'd like to thank the commission for questions and suggestions that led staff to revise. Uh, the report and presentation to provide additional clarity. For example, one of the commission's comments was that it is hard to follow the existing versus proposed fees even in the crosswalk. Uh, so staff agreed and worked on various techniques that should improve the ability to see these changes. On August 16th, staff presented this project to the board. As an attachment to the board's report, we shared a summary of the commission's input. Uh, the board found this project in alignment with its identified goals and supported moving it forward toward a public hearing. Since that meeting, we have worked with the Berkeley Group to produce the draft ordinances that are before you. This included determining which are general fee guidelines such as refunds, timing and mode of payment. And which others apply to specific ordinances. We expanded the document that is the summary of proposed changes as we will further explain. We also made some minor fee revisions such as removing a separate bond inspection fee that is redundant and covered in the new comprehensive bond fee. Uh, with the county engineer Frank Paul's help, we were able to make several revisions to the water protection ordinance, WPO fee. Formatting and fee titles to reduce redundancy and hopefully increase, increase clarity. Uh, the commission may also recall the single-family bundling that is illustrated on this slide. Um, the bundling fee is applied across all types of the square footages. It includes building plan review and the first two inspections per inspection type. Subsequent inspections beyond these are subject to the separation, separate reinspection fee. The proposed bundle, single-family fees are more closely aligned with the fee with the staff effort. Smaller homes are subject to a lesser fee and larger homes with more area to inspect uh have larger fees. Also, you may recall a fairly in-depth explanation of the proposed changes at the July, July 11th meeting. Uh, since that time, staff added to this document and the explanation of proposed changes relating to ARB and WPO applications. Uh, the ARB application fees were grouped into the following categories based on uh staff effort. Uh, board review minor and board review major and also staff review minor and staff review major. The WPO application fees were consolidated where there was repetition. And in a few cases, the fee names were restated for clarity. Additionally, we responded to the request from cadre to allow full payment of the VSNP fee instead of half upon submittal. And then half upon issuance of the general permit. Based on the advice of our deputy county attorney, uh, we have prepared two separate slides. One for action on each of the two ordinance amendments. Staff recommends that the planning commission support and recommend approval of the proposed subdivision text amendment uh to the board of supervisors. Uh, this is in attachment six. Staff recommends that planning commission support and recommend approval of the proposed zoning text amendment to the board of supervisor, also found in attachment six. The next steps, uh, so we have a hearing with the board of supervisors on December 6th of this year. And staff recommends an effective date of July 1, 2024 for the new fee schedule. This later effective date will allow CDD to make the necessary, necessary changes to our systems. Um, and to limit the impacts on contracts for development that are currently underway. Um, with that, I thank you all for your time and consideration. Want to open it up for questions?
Thank you so much. Uh, any questions for staff?
Now, you. Well, the only thing that I would offer as a, as a um, as a, could you please? Is when you get to the section about abbreviations. I realize there's some emerging new ideas about how you put the abbreviations after you state the name. But remember, we're talking about a broad community and so if you could consider going, returning to the uh previous way where you'd have the name of the. The name of the, the spelled out name and then the abbreviation that you're going to use further on um, and parentheses. I believe you will have more people who will be able to follow. Even though I'm an insider, quasi-insider, um, I had to go back up and say, well, wait a minute. Particularly around the water protection thing, which one? Because it's, there was one, a part that was off, had a P in it, one that had an M in it. And I had to go back and say, which one are we talking about here? Or are we talking about the one with the P with the M? If you would just put that, I think you would, you will, you will save yourself some frustrated readers.
Okay. Commissioner Missile?
Yeah, thanks. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, you mentioned under factors favorable creates a fee structure that can be amended more easily as needed. And I was just curious, um, how often does the fee structure? Against the revenue requirement, how often is that reconciled?
So as far as the reconciliation, I, we. Have an objective to review every two years.
Okay.
That, you know, uh, yeah, we, obviously we haven't done in the past, but that's, this is the first step in that continuing effort.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then one just curious, on the applications of the entrance corridors. Um, you define what major and minor is for both staff and board. I'm curious where signage falls?
I believe signage is separate, is that?
Yes, let me see if I can pull that up.
If it's easy, otherwise the big deal.
So. Major and minor, staff and board.
Yeah.
And um, entrance corridor review of any sign is called out separately.
Got it.
And then resubmital of the sign, if, if you keep going through iterations is another, it's all handled as a separate fee. It's not in the four that he talked about, major and minor.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I do have a couple of, Commissioner Moore, did you have a question?
I do not, thank you.
Uh, I do have a couple of questions. Um, the first one, just from my knowledge, under the agriculture and forest districts. What is the benefit to the county for eliminating the fee to create or to add to a district?
That, that is a really good question and I feel that somebody who knows a whole lot more than me is probably better equipped to answer that. I, I think that there's the um. Kevin's looking at me. Are, you want to take this?
Um, no, I'm sorry, I didn't. Uh, could you repeat the question again?
Sure. Under agriculture and forest districts, what is the benefit to the county for eliminating the fee to create or to add to a district? If you need time to look it up, we can do that later.
It, it was recommended to us by um Scott Clark, who works with administering the districts. And I think the concept is that we want to promote the districts. You know, you, you pay a fee to withdraw from them. Um, but if you're creating a new one or if you're adding land to one, we felt that that was something we wanted to incentivize by not having a fee. Or at least promote in that sort of token way.
Okay, that's just from my knowledge. Thank you. Um, and my second question was, I was looking at my notes from our last meeting. And we had a conversation about, is there a way to use the fees to incentivize affordable housing or climate responsive design? I didn't see anything. It's silent when this resubmission, so I'm curious. Did you look at it and say, hey, we're not going to do this for these reasons or bad idea, good idea, just looking for a response? Uh, so we spent a lot of time talking about that last time.
Sure, um, so to answer that question, uh, we obviously do consider that, um, but the, that would be. Entirely out of, kind of out of the scope of this effort. This is really just getting us to a baseline so we can establish fees, make them clear to understand um and implement. Uh, and then, uh, you know, go through that continuous improvement process and that might be something we can, we can consider. But just trying to make it so everyone actually understands the fees we have, um, will get us to a, a better discussion point on those types of things.
Gotcha. This is, this is just setting the foundation then and then we.
Yes, that's right. Yes.
Thank you. Um, that was all of my questions. I'll open up the, do you have one?
Sure, I might, I might offer as a, as a um, as a supporting point for, for what you just asked. Is that when we get to the, to the point during the comp plan review where we're looking at specific things? I might suggest that you would put that kind of, what are the incentives that we do? And look at the fee structures for those kinds of pieces, which might then be, be moved to this project to sort of say, this is something that we're interested in.
But thank you. Yes, sir. That'll open up the, the public hearing. Um, did our consultants want to say anything or, oh, all right. I don't think I have anyone as registered to speak, but I'm gonna open up the floor. Does anyone here want to say anything? All right, Madam Clerk, as they went online, do I just say anything?
No, sir, there isn't.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. All right, I'll bring it back into the commission. Any last words or points of discussion you wanna take? Um, I do have one more. I just thought that I have a, one question is kind of detailed. And uh, maybe it's for another day, but I'll go ahead and pose it. I was looking at the different categories uh that we had for the fees, right? So you had like residential, plumbing, mechanical. I saw one, for example, sprinklers and there's a, it was fire suppression, it was sprinklers. I was curious if there was a fire suppression system that was not sprinkler, like a server room, right? That wouldn't have a sprinkler system, but fire suppression, does that fit in another place or? And that's kind of nuts and bolts, but it's something that kind of jumped out.
So I think you're talking about like a Halon system.
Yeah, anything that's not water.
That would be commercial. Um, so we didn't review the commercial fees in this round.
You did not? Okay.
Just the, just residential.
Okay, and electrical vehicle charging stations, I'm not sure if that's too granular, but I was looking under electric. They had lots of other things and that's a, a hot topic that we're seeing in a lot of our submissions coming through. But that was, that's all I had, so. Is there a commissioner that's in a position to make a motion?
Sure.
All right.
No one else is coming up to the mic, so I'll.
So the first one is STA?
Yes, uh, I recommend, I move to recommend approval of STA 2023 dash two is contained in attachment six.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Vivins?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye. All right, thank you. Then there's another motion for ZTA.
We will bring that slide right up.
Oh, yeah. Take your time.
There it is. Okay, I'll keep rolling. Uh, I move to recommend approval of ZTA 2023 dash four with the following amendments.
Second.
I'm sorry, did, did, uh, did you have any suggested amendments?
No, sir.
All right, then probably, I think you were probably looking for the first motion on the screen rather than the second motion.
That is probably what I was. Do you want me to redo it?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I move, uh, which, oh, this one, I'm sorry. I thought this was the second one. I move to recommend approval of ZTA 2023 dash four is contained in attachment six.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, should you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mister Vivins?
Aye.
Mister Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you to the staff. Great job.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to our second public hearing of the night. We'll, we'll give a moment for staff to switch out.
I need you, man.
Mr. Ritalbuck, just let me know when you're ready. Let's say we're close to getting ready here, so we'll open up um, this session here with ZMA twenty twenty-two, zero 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 twelve, Arbor Oaks Towns. Mister Ritalbuck, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Andy Ritalbuck, and I'm a senior planner with the Albemarle County Planning Division. And tonight, we are here for a rezoning request um, for application number ZMA twenty twenty-two dash twelve, known as Arbor Oaks Towns. To provide some context of the location of the property that is subject of this rezoning request, I've provided the um, aerial view as shown on the screen. Uh, the site is highlighted in yellow. It is directly across hydraulic road from um, the intersection that goes both into the Lamb's Lane campus where Albemarle High School is located, as well as the Georgetown Green Townhouse Development. Um, and then you can see where Georgetown Road intersects with Hydraulic Road down at the um, center bottom of the screen. The proposal for this application, it consists of one parcel that is currently zoned R four residential at four units per acre. The property is just less than one acre, point nine six. The existing use is um, a vacant parcel with scattered trees around the site. The applicant is looking to rezone to R fifteen residential, which is fifteen units per acre with proffers. Um, and because the property is just one, just less than one acre in size, the applicant is um, proffering a maximum of fourteen units with a concept plan, and all of the units would be single-family attached units such as townhouses. The applicant is proposing a cluster division um, for these fourteen units, and that would require twenty-five percent open space. The density of the development would come to fourteen point six units per acre. And then the applicant is also proffering fifteen percent affordable housing, which would come out to two of the units out of the fourteen. Um, there are also two associated requests with this rezoning. There is a planting strip waiver or exception request, um, because, and I'll get into this more later in the presentation. But the private street that is being proposed for this development operates more like a parking lot. This planting strip exception request does require action to be taken by the planning commission tonight. Um, and then there is another request, a central sewerage system request, that does not require action by the PC. It only requires action by the Board of Supervisors. And that is because a private pump or lift station in force main would be required um, by ACSA for this property. So um, to provide more information on the zoning, I've uh, highlighted the subject parcel there in the center of the screen. It's kind of roughly square shaped. Um, as I said, it's zoned R four residential by right, because it is just less than one acre in size. Um, you could only get three residential units on it. It is surrounded by um, largely other residentially zoned properties of various densities from R fifteen to R ten, um, and other R four properties to the east or to the west, north and south. And then to the west, across hydraulic road, you have Georgetown Green, which is zoned R six. And then the school's campus, which is zoned rural areas. And in addition, the overlay districts that this property are subject to are the entrance corridor and the airport impact area. In the comprehensive plan, this property is subject to the place's twenty-nine master plan. And in that master plan, it is designated as urban density residential, which is the orange on the screen, and that um, designation, land use designation recommends residential uses at six to thirty-four units per acre, along with supporting uses. Um, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, this proposal is recommending fourteen point six units per acre, which does fall within that range. And no supporting uses are proposed with this rezoning. The maximum uh, residential building height for urban density residential is four stories or forty-five feet, which um, the proposal does conform with that recommendation. And um, just looking at the map of surrounding properties, it is largely um, other urban density residential um, adjacent to it with neighborhood density residential, farther to the east, some urban mixed use to the north along hydraulic. And then everything to the west across hydraulic, including both Georgetown Green and um, the school's campus are designated rural areas in the um, comprehensive plan. This slide shows a screenshot or just a graphic of the proposed concept plan and the layout. You can see there's one central private street um, proposed for this development. And although it is considered a private street, because the applicant has indicated they intend to subdivide, it really acts more like a parking lot than it would um, your traditional street. And then there are two rows of townhouses on either side, eight townhouses proposed in block two, on the right, six townhouses in block one on the left. And then there are areas of green space surrounding it, um, with some amenities located uh, in the green space as well. So the specifics of looking at that concept plan, the applicant has proffered that concept plan. So when it would come into site plan, we would be looking to ensure that the site plan um, is in conformance with that concept plan. As I mentioned, there are two blocks of townhouses for fourteen units total. There's the private street that operates as a parking lot, a shared parking lot for all of those units. Because the applicant is um, doing a cluster division, twenty-five percent open space is required. Um, as I mentioned, pump station would be required for sanitary sewer. And then the applicant is also proposing to dedicate approximately five feet of right of way along hydraulic road to um, provide a planting strip there and move the sidewalk a little bit farther back from the um, road. Because currently the sidewalk is right up against um, the travelway. Um, the, as I mentioned, this uh, application does include a proffer statement. There are three uh, main separate proffers. One is for the affordable housing at uh, the standard fifteen percent of residential units constructed, which would come out to two units. Um, since it is a conventional rezoning and not an uh, planned district, um, there's a concept plan, not an application plan, so the concept plan has to be proffered if the applicant is interested in having that really be the guiding plan for the uh, for the development. So the concept plan is proffered. And then, as I mentioned, the open space uh, is being proffered as well with dedication to an HOA. Um, and then looking at the additional request that does require action by the planning commission, as I mentioned, there is a planting strip exception request for modification to the street standards. And that is that planting strips not be provided on um, either side of the private street, since it really acts more like a parking lot. And so because of that, staff recommends and has included a condition that parking lot landscaping requirements would be more appropriate than the planting strip requirements um, that you would usually find along a street. So looking at the positive aspects of the rezoning request, it is consistent with the recommendations of the place's twenty-nine master plan. And it is consistent with the majority of the applicable neighborhood model principles. The one concern that was identified is that the concept plan does not provide for an interconnection to the parcel to the east, which is one single family home to the east. Um, and ultimately, looking at staff's recommendations, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request Arbor Oaks Towns, ZMA twenty twenty-two dash twelve. And staff also has no concerns with the planting strip exception request. And so if the planning commission does choose to recommend approval of the rezoning, staff would also recommend approval um, of the, or yes, staff would recommend approval of the planting strip exception request. With the one condition that I mentioned, that because the private street will function like a parking lot, landscaping should be provided along it, um, consistent with the landscaping within a parking area section of the zoning ordinance, really instead of the planting strip portion of the um, of the zoning ordinance. And so I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the staff report. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Murray?
Yes, I can imagine a lot of students, you know, walking across, walking from there across the street to get to school. Um, has anyone looked at like, where would the, the crosswalks be that they would be using for there? I kind of remember. Crosswalk, the, the principal crosswalk, that, that is my neighborhood, so. I live right around the corner. So the principal crosswalk, if you watch how children come along, if they're on that side of the street, they go to um, hydraulic and Whitewood and cross there. There's sort of signs that say, you know, controlled walking and controlled signs. And in the afternoon, there's actually one of Albemarle's sheriffs there that helps to move children across the street there.
Any other questions?
So a quick question, you, you mentioned this, and I just wanted a clarification. So the, is it in the project to move the, the, to create the planting strip and cr- and, and move the sidewalk from hydraulic road? Is that part of the project, or is that, or they just proffering this, the land to do that?
Um, it is shown on the concept plan. I've pulled the concept plan up here, and so you can see that the uh, sidewalk is shifted back a few feet.
So that would be part of the, so it's not just that they're proffering the land to do that, but they're actually going to be doing that as part of the?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Good question. Absolutely.
So, hi, thanks. So do you know if there's been any discussion, perhaps I'll just wait for when the applicant comes? Do you know if there's any, been any discussion to not connect to hydraulic road as shown on the concept plan? But to perhaps do a shared road that comes in, perhaps in the middle of the project from the, the single family home, which would then give us the connectivity?
Um, I'm not aware if that has been um, considered by the applicant.
At least we'll ask them. Thank you.
Any final questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Like that'll open the public hearing? And I'll call for the applicant if they have a presentation. Welcome. You guys share your name and uh, who you're with?
Chairman, members of the commission, I am Katura Rowell. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions. In regards to the planting strip in the parking lot, uh, biggest reason is because the parking lot comes right up to the sidewalk. And then there is a green space directly behind the sidewalk before the townhouse. So there will be plantings all along that on both sides of, as well as then the reason we kept that open space to the left is that's where in the visual of the aerial, uh, that's where all the big hardwoods are. And so we've actually incorporated that into the backyards and the open spaces as well. Make sure that, and the, all the construction to the right is where there's nothing but scrubs and brush and so forth. If you drive by there, you'll see. So uh, and the entrance does line up, just like you said, across the street and uh, uh, you know, some other kind of access, or who knows when county does your school expansion and what they do with those roads and improvements in part say. But we're in alignment with that. VDOTs acknowledged it and is okay with that entrance. Can I answer any other questions?
Sure. So any, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Vivins?
Thank you. So my question was, if um, if I could ask for the, the concept plan, let me put it up again. That's possible, thank you. So we know that the property sits between sort of uh, it sits on one side, it has, they all have the same names. So this road that you're putting in is going to be the same name as the road that's right next to it.
Not wide.
No, at least it's what it looked like on your plan. In any event, the one where there's the single family house.
Uh, directly behind.
Behind you. Is it not possible, did you have any conversation about using widening that road a little bit to come into the property that way, as opposed to having to put an additional lane on?
They're a very old couple. And uh, she's kind of bedridden and they don't want to be disturbed by anything.
Could you use the mic, sir? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, good. She, they're a very old couple and uh, she's somewhat, you know, locked into the house and uh, he does some construction, but doesn't uh, they don't want to sell, they don't want to be disturbed. Um, so the best thing we did was just take the end of our parking lot directly to their property line. There's no separation there, so at some point in time, that can be vacated, dedicated to open space, and then a connection to the rear of someone when they decide to ever sell it. Now again, that parcel's not real developable and the topography on it is, falls off greatly to a stream in the back, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions?
I just comment, um, thank you for, I saw that in your narrative about including um, permeable pavers, so.
Right.
Greatly appreciated.
That, I'm uh, they're going to be energy efficient townhouses. Um, you know, I've been a builder around here since eighty-three and like to do a lot of energy efficient kind of things and natural water retention saving, so forth.
That's great, great to hear. Um, is there any sort of access control plan for that open space picnic area? Any access control? Like when I see that concept plan, it's like anybody walking down the street could jump into that area and? Is it high?
Yeah, yeah, it's not. Well, I'll let you talk.
Yeah.
There'll be a, a minor retaining wall at the
Oh, okay.
Backside of the, I just, if, there is now. I mean, we have to move that whole retaining wall back into a steeper grade.
Okay, I did pick that up on the
And you know, the dentist office and everything next door have like terrace, three terraces, retaining wall.
Okay.
Uh, our access to that open space and we'll fence that area as well.
Okay.
Just to make it secure is right at the back. If you'd show the uh, concept plan again. So yeah, you see at the end of the sidewalk near the handicap parking area turnaround space. There's a walk that goes there and then the fenced area all along that, along that front edge.
Okay.
To secure their, and designated specifically. And it'll have a grill and, you know.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's no other questions. Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right. Any pertinent items for discussion amongst the commission?
Just wanted to make sure that there were no other comments either from the audience or online before the public hearing was closed.
You are, let me reopen that Joker? All right, Madam Clerk, is there anyone online that wishes to speak?
Yes, sir, I do have one person. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address. And we'll have three minutes to speak, starting when you start talking.
Hi there, my name is Barbara Corley, and I am a resident of the subdivision across the street from this proposed subdivision. I live at Georgetown Green. Um, and uh, I am interested in how the property aligns both with our road, uh, I believe it's called Georgetown Green, even though the school and I, we, uh, my subdivision and the school share that road. Um, and what I am concerned about with the property, first of all, uh, the developer that developed Georgetown Green in nineteen sixty-eight, we're fifty-five years young. We have um, our, we're, we are zoned R six, um, and the, we have nine acres of public uh, land for our homeowners association. So I'm really concerned about the way in which this has been designed. I feel that fourteen townhouse units for less than one acre is really tight. Um, and I think that the system of um, uh, uh, entrance, ingress and egress is going to be very um, problematic, given that it is as narrow as it is. It does align, they have moved it to align with our ingress and egress. They have moved it to align with our ingress and egress, but. I don't know if you guys have ever driven by there in the morning or in the afternoon when school lets out or or is beginning. It's very difficult. On top of that, Lamb's Lane. That road will at some point begin to be a major artery to. Uh, allow students from the prop, the schools in the back, the middle school and the elementary school to flow through. Between Albemarle High School and Georgetown Green and flow out onto hydraulic there. I talked with buildings and grounds. They were talking about the possibility of putting what is known as a modified T. There and I don't see how if this property goes in the way it is suggested, they would be able to do a modified T. I'm and I'm not a, this is not my area of expertise, but. She asked me to Google it. I Googled it. It. Doesn't I it it wouldn't work, I don't think, if he was to put it in the way he's currently got it. And then finally. I feel that. The, again, the 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 open space. Even though it's designated twenty-five percent, if you look at those eight townhouses to the right. Um, they don't appear to have any kind of backyard. There is no open space between. That section of the subdivision and the the next door neighbor, uh, which is. Uh, condos or apartments and.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else online?
No, sir, there isn't.
All right, thank you. All right. Sir, would you like to have a moment to respond to what you've heard?
You want to show the concept plan again? So those are blocks and what she's referring to is that there's no. Green space there because it's all contained as one block.
Sir, if he's sticking to the mic more, thank you.
Yes.
So there we go. All right, so the. The dedicated green spaces there. Even behind that. Off to the right of that green space in the back of the block one is twenty feet more backyard. Same thing on this far right side. It's almost thirty feet of backyard from that lane to the edge of the actual unit. So. It's not dotted in green because in a block concept plan, you have to show the lot area. But that's not, the buildings aren't going to go line to line. It can't. Any questions in regards to that? And we're adding plantings in all those areas as well because there's nothing worth keeping in those areas.
Thank you. Any final questions before I release the applicant?
As far as the entrance goes, it lines up directly across V, that's a VDOT standard. There's no. Give and take on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I will close the public hearing. Bring it into the commission. Is there any pertinent points you want to discuss in more detail?
Chair, thank you. Can I ask Mr. McDermott to talk about the whole green tea there? And and what VDOT has spoken to because there's a couple, there are a couple pieces that are that are kind of conflated there. So yes, there's a master plan to look at moving traffic more effectively around the Lamb's Lane campus. Because right now there's only one way out and one way in. And so there's been some discussion about how do we sort of improve the circulation around around the Lamb's Lake? And and will we not, in fact, put buses someplace else and put parents someplace else? Let them come onto the campus, but that hasn't, I don't think that's been settled out yet. I think it's still in the design. Phase, but all of that has, and then I'll be quiet and let Kevin speak to this. All of that is in an attempt to realize that the the Georgetown. The Georgetown.
Townhouses.
Townhouses. Have for years had to share their entrance and exit at one at two times a year, uh, two times a day, excuse me. And that this 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 movement was an attempt to sort of facilitate that and to take some pressure off of their their egress and ingress. But and then, but I will let Kevin speak to that since he's more, I've no bits of it, but I've not seen. I've not seen the plan yet, finally.
Sure, happy to speak to that. Kevin McDermott, the acting planning director for Albemarle County. We are currently under contract with a consult, an engineering consultant that is looking at. Some of the proposals that came out of the Lamb's Lane master plan and those included. Construction of a loop road that would bring vehicles from Lamb's Lane. Around the south side of the high school and connect into Georgetown Green. That was part of the Lamb's Lane master plan. We have the consultant looking at how that road could be designed and also. How that would intersect with hydraulic road and what that intersection might work, look like, how it could operate. Is the woman on the on the call mentioned, one of the options that we're looking at. Is what's called a green tea or a modified tea. This is essentially a protected left turn. So people coming out of Georgetown Green could do a two-stage crossing with a protected left turn. This is all still in design right now. We don't know exactly what's going to be recommended. If that if that were the case, it would probably require some adjustment to the parcel across the street in this entrance. I'll just point out that this is a a concept plan for the rezoning. VDOT has acknowledged in their comments that that they would need to. Uh, submit a waiver for access spacing and there may need to be changes to their access anyway, so. Uh, all that to say that I think that there's a lot more to come during the. Site development plan stage and the actual entrance may not look like this. And it would have to conform with whatever design we have for the other side.
Any other questions? Commissioner Moore, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Just for clarification, this does go before the ARB since it's in the entrance corridor, is that correct? Correct, okay. All right. Commissioner Vivens, are you prepared to make the motion?
I am, sir. If if my client person to the left will put it up, I would appreciate that. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of ZMA twenty-two-two twelve Arbor Oaks Oaks Towns. For the reasons stated in the staff report.
Your second. Second. Any further discussion? Right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Quayburn.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Vivens.
Hi.
All right.
Look, I have the other ones, sir.
That's right. And then there's a second motion regarding the planting strip exception that's coming up.
There it is.
There it is.
And before a motion is made, I'd just like to clarify again that. What we're asking, what staff is recommending that the planning commission act on is the revised resolution that I sent out by email earlier today and then handed you all paper copies of. That would replace the resolution that was included. Yeah, it's so it's the revised resolution dated October ninth. Rather than the attachment to the staff report in this case, I made minor minor stylistic revisions to the resolution. But I think it more properly conforms with the ordinance in the revised format.
Thank you.
Ready, Chair?
Right, thank you.
I move to adopt the revised resolution dated October nine, twenty-twenty-three, approving a planting strip exception for Arbor Oaks Towns.
Your second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Ma- Murray.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Quayburn.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Vivens.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the the presentations and best of luck as you move forward throughout the process.
Thank you all. Good seeing you.
We bet. All right, next is committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report you'd like to share out on?
I have a brief one.
Sure.
The agricultural and forestal district advisory committee met on. October second and reviewed an extension to the to the AFD, an addition to the agricultural forestal district. Adjacent to Kimlock. And it was approximately twenty-five acres, twenty-six acre addition. That was approved unanimously. And that was essentially the meat of the meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Missile? Any other committee reports? No, all right, I'll turn it over to Mr. McDermott for the next two items, which is the review of the board supervisors meeting from October fourth and AC forty-four update.
Um, on the at the board of supervisors meeting that was held on October fourth, there were two public hearings. But on items that the planning commission has seen. The first one was the SP for the Mill Creek Lot eleven, the one that added office uses in industrial area. The planning commission recommended approval and the board approved that one. Um, and then also the zoning text amendment for the countywide certificate of appropriateness. That would be applicable to projects that the county has a public-private partnership on. Once again, commission voted to recommend approval and the board did approve that. Uh, there was also a long discussion on transportation at that meeting. If anyone had a chance to. Listen to that, you may be interested. We went, we went over a transportation prioritization process. Laying the groundwork for sort of ranking projects for transportation throughout the county. The, um, we did an initial ranking this and to kind of show off how that process would work. When we looked at it and and scored projects, there's a list of, you know, the top fifty is actually what we provided the board. The top one we identified was the the Fifth Street I sixty-four interchange area. So essentially really from just north of the interchange down through down south to. To the next intersection behind that, but ranked really high, obviously, because the level development we have going on there with Southwood, also. High accident location, high congestion location. That was the number one project, but I encourage you to go through the entire list. We will be going back to the board at a future date to with the refined rankings.
Good to know.
Uh, and I will pass on the the AC forty-four since we had went over that already.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McDermott? All right, let's move to new business. We have two items there. The first is the joint meeting with the board of supervisors, which. Has been, there was a tentative date that's been pushed to the right, still a work in progress. Looking for, is that December-ish? Is that we're shooting for?
Essentially mid-November, early-December are the is a list of dates that they're trying to get, they're trying to. Hone in on maybe a a stack of about four or five that the board can make and then we'll bring it to the commission for the final decision.
Okay. And then item B, a joint meeting with the Charleston Planning Commission.
Uh, yeah, we have a meeting, a staff level meeting with them scheduled. I believe it's later this week, if not early next week, to talk to them about how we can coordinate on some of these major topics that we'd like to. Bring between you all, including AC forty-four, their zoning update, our zoning modernization process. So we'll have some discussion with them at this upcoming meeting at the staff level and then I'll bring those those items back to you all.
All right, great update. Good to hear. Any old business?
One thing, Chair, if you haven't seen it, I've, those of you who may see Sean Tubbs's email, weekly email. There was a link to a group that called Marissa. That put out sort of specific, they've done specific climate impact things for around the country, which we have one. Of which it is right there. And so I would advise you, or I wouldn't advise. Commissioner Murray to look at it because it'll just play into his hand, but I would. And so I would never want to do that. But I would advise you to look at it. It's and if there are other places in in the country that you're interested in, you can look at it. It's a it's a two-page that basically talks about shifting seasons. And what are the, you know, sort of what's the impact on human health and crops and things like that? It's an easy sort of infographic infographic kind of thing. And Chair, if I could just say one other thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would just like to give thanks, given what we did tonight, that we have a recycling bin back up here so that we don't have to be self-service. Like at the grocery store and take our recycling home. And so in the spirit of what, yeah, that's been gone for, it's been gone for months.
For real? I've been using a blue bin.
No, we got a bin. We didn't have a bin.
Oh.
We've been binless. And so in the spirit of pushing all this stuff to people's homes. It's self-service bin, binning. Been deprived. That's right, we've been deprived. So thank you whoever put that back, so we can now recycle in the place. Thank you very much.
Any any items for follow-up? All right, well, is there a motion to adjourn until the next planning commission meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth? And so we'll be starting at four o'clock.
So moved.
It's a work session, huh?
All right.
Cool.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and no one's changing their vote, so meeting adjourned.